Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Chapin, roll call, please.
Okay, um, so reporting from your location remotely, Mr. Quiner, you're up first.
Present, appearing remotely from city of Grand Ledge County of Eaton, state of Michigan.
Very good, Mr. McKenon.
Present, participating remotely from Oneida Township Eaton County.
This is Du Fort.
Good evening, I am present virtually from city of Grand Ledge Eaton County.
Mr. Shiflett.
Present, appearing remotely from the city of Grand Ledge Eaton County.
Ms. Shannon.
Present, appearing remotely from Oneida Township Eaton County.
Very good, and Mr. Smith.
Present, participating remotely from city of Lansing, Ingham County.
And President Clark Pearson is absent tonight, so I'll eliminate her from the roll call, from the motions throughout.
Right, thank you.
As absent, okay.
All right, so six of us present, this brings us to approval of our agenda items. If there is a motion.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the March twenty second, twenty twenty one agenda items with one amendment of consolidating all public comment on all items under heading number six.
Their support?
Support.
Moved by Nicole, supported by Denise. And so just for clarification, this would consolidate all public comment tonight for those listening both on the agenda items. And that's to come after we give our various reports, so section six of the agenda as well as public comment on non-agenda items. So any public comment you're seeking to give tonight would all be requested at the same portion of the meeting. Any other discussion?
I just want to quit, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ms. Shannon.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, I think in the last few meetings, there's been some confusion and folks have asked to comment on non-agenda items during agenda item time and other folks have feel like, I know that we changed the way that we're doing it, and I think that at least with all the items up for discussion now, it just makes sense to consolidate so folks aren't waiting and everything can be addressed all at once prior to any action that we take.
Ben?
I don't disagree in spirit, I guess I would, are we gonna remove, are we removing eight off of the agenda then tonight, is that what we're doing by this motion?
I think that would be the effect is to amend the agenda to consolidate items six and eight and remove eight.
Okay, my concern tonight is that the public doesn't have an opportunity to know that, and for people that might be getting on later, that's my concern, I don't want to cut those individuals off, so. But moving forward, I'm not opposed to it, but that's my concern tonight as we sit here right now at six oh six.
I have to, I'm, I think I agree with Ben on that only because if there were others anticipating joining, say, in thirty or forty minutes, even an hour from now to give comment on another topic, they might have missed that opportunity, that's just my thought there. So, but hearing no further discussion, Dr. Chapin, roll call, please.
So are we voting as amended?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so roll call, Mrs. Du Fort, you're up.
I'm going to vote no simply because I did not think about excluding people who came in late.
Mr. Shiflett?
No.
Ms. Shannon?
Based on the comments that I've heard from others, I will also vote no.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Quiner?
No.
And Mr. McKenon?
No.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Shannon, and I wonder if anyone's ever made a motion and then voted, so that's interesting, but I obviously that, I appreciate that discussion, so the amended motion does not pass, six nays, zero yays, so do we have a new motion?
I'll move that the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the March twenty two, two thousand twenty one agenda items as presented.
Support.
Any further discussion? Okay, Dr. Chapin.
Yep, Mrs. Du Fort?
Yes.
Mr. Shiflett?
Yeah.
Ms. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Quiner?
Yes.
And Mr. McKenon?
Yes.
Very good.
Second motion passes six zero, that is for the original agenda as presented. Now on to approval of consent agenda items.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the March twenty second, twenty twenty one consent consent agenda items as presented.
For. Is that Mr. McKenon?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, and just for clarification, that's both the approval of the March eighth work session and closed session minutes, as well as the March seventeenth special meeting minutes and the approval of the hiring of Kimberly Lee, an elementary teacher at Beagle. Being the consent agenda, I'll ask Dr. Chapin to call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Shiflett?
Yes.
Ms. Shannon?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Quiner?
Yes.
Mr. McKenon?
Yes.
And Mrs. Du Fort?
Yes.
All right, that moves us into our reports, leading off with Capitol Connections, which is the one I'll be handling. So just a moment, please, obviously, well, people may not be aware, but there is a lot happening with respect to the legislature and at the moment proposed legislation, so we've heard the various DHHS orders and clarifications on athletics and testing as well as updated CDC guidelines. Those all impact school districts and certainly will impact ours, and I think we'll hear more details on those topics as we have other presentations tonight. Separately from that, there's some interesting bus safety law, legislation that's been proposed, a package of bills dealing with admission and entrance into school buses, cameras, as well as stickering and other things meant to further protect students as well as traffic around school buses. There are other packages of bills that are being discussed with respect to meeting foreign language requirements and some type of work training in place of those, or at least to supplement those and meeting that requirement, suspending the Michigan merit curriculum and other assessment exams while we're in these unique school year periods. There's a bill there to waive, yeah, the Michigan merit exam for the spring of twenty twenty one, to waive M-Step, to waive work keys, and to waive WIDA for the spring twenty twenty one semester. Just going through a few more, there's a proposal to suspend the third grade retention requirement for the twenty twenty one school year, and there was one more I wanted to, allowing school employees to serve as substitute teachers if they had been employed by the district for at least three years. And I believe there is an extension of that proposed as well, but anyway, these are all in the introductory phases or in the hearing phases, so we'll get into more detail with those, given that we have lots to cover tonight, should those continue moving through the legislature towards enactment. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add that they've seen? If not, that moves us to the Eaton Risa report, that's Denise.
Yes, I have no report this evening, our last recent meeting was three seventeen, which was the same evening as Grand Ledge's special meeting, and I chose to attend Grand Ledge's rather than Eaton, so I will update to you next month.
Great, thank you. How about equity, diversity, and inclusion?
Um, I'll go ahead and take that. We continue to have a lot of great discussion in our meetings, I think one of the most pertinent items we talked about was how we should be reporting out to the community and what that should look like. And I think it was important, important discussion we had where we wanted to make sure that we were reporting to the community in a way that kept us responsible for what we need to be accomplishing, however, we didn't want to put out traditional minutes because we felt we still needed to create a safe space for everyone to be able to express themselves, how they see fit and have it not necessarily projected out to the community, so we have been coming up with templates, not only for our full meeting, but for our subcommittee meetings on things as we are ready to share, so for example, if a subcommittee comes up with an idea, we're not necessarily going to report that to the community because the entire group might not be ready to share yet, might not be on the same page with it, so as we come out with, you know, with more and more information, we should have a template moving forward that will be placed on the district's website on what is happening in the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee. I'm trying to think, Dr. Chapin, am I leaving anything else out?
No, I think that was, that was, that was critical, I, this is a really important work, obviously, and this committee has been very significant, we want to increase the involvement with a few more teachers, a few more staff members. It's really, really difficult work to do in a Zoom meeting format, given the content and the substance and so on, so we're just trying to get, move this along outside of Zoom format, and we can meet in person and really, really dig down, I hope this is a long lasting meeting or committee, I would just add that.
Mr. Shiflett, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. McKenon, Dr. Chapin, that brings us to our bond update, I see Dr. Mike Johnson is on, I assume he'll be presenting that.
I am, evening everybody. Hope things are going well for you, it's a beautiful day, I know that. This is a real brief update on the bond, things are happening now in the next two months, we'll wrap things up, it's really, it's even more and more exciting because it changes almost by the day as the finishing touches get put on all the building projects. However, we're not quite there yet, Holbrook continues to make good progress, for example, the gym floor will be installed next week. I got emptied out in the last week, and there's a lot of space in there, so they re, they moved some of the things that had been collected in there throughout the winter out, and it's, it's a big full-size gym, so the wood floor goes down next week. Drywall, drywall throughout the second floor, a story addition is hung upstairs, a lot of it's been painted, it looks really nice. Again, they're putting the finishing touches on a lot of the other pieces, coming together very well. Beagle went through there this morning with, with, with Steve, the project, the superintendent, the music suite is enclosed, mechanical, and also the windows are installed now. This beautiful spaces, and I was trying to figure out how much bigger they were, are in their, their current spaces that he's inside, settling a lot, so yeah, they're a lot bigger. So that defines it as well as I can, probably. Also, the masonry wall and steel structures are going up around the pool area, so they're building the building around the pool that's now under the ground, you can't see, so then they'll dig that out as they get closer, it's quite a project, it's very interesting to watch, go week by week as we move along. In the academic portion, the two-story on the southwest, on the west and southwest end of the building, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing continues to work, to be completed, much of the drywall and painting is already done. Classroom cabinetry is on site waiting to be installed, and the cabinetry, the casework going to the classroom is really sharp. It'll look very, very nice as we finish this up. Overall furniture, you, the furniture purchases for Beagle and Holbrook are on the agenda for tonight's meeting, thank goodness, it barely made it. This result, this represents furniture throughout both buildings. The bid was very competitive with the several companies vying for our business, we had several vendors that actually are securing good portions of this purchase for board approval tonight, with the largest being Dwell Corporation, Dwell has supplied our, our, much of the furniture throughout the district for years. They, they came in and they, they got probably at least, I want to say sixty percent of the purchase, but other vendors were involved also. Much of our, I will say, much of the stuff we bought is made by a company, Mean, M-I-E-N, and that's locally made in Grand Rapids, so it's all locally grown, so to speak, if you call Grand Rapids local. So hopefully that's the good news, the good news about that because of the activity that we have, the vendors kept the prices down, and we are going to recognize the savings from a budget we had started with, and that, of course, we'll have places to spend that money on some of the other things we're doing, but it was a good thing, and we're getting some really, really nice furniture, I think you got, everybody will be impressed, and I can't wait to see it. Holbrook's, because they're a little bit ahead of Beagle, we're looking at getting theirs toward the middle of the end of June, and they'll take delivery on the Beagle furniture mid, mid-August, perhaps, mid to late August. Roundabout, the city has agreed, I think I may have mentioned last time, now maybe I didn't, I think I learned in the interim, the city has agreed for Grand Ledge to use West Jefferson Street as main detour route for the closure on M forty-three, if in fact it ends up being a closure, it's still being discussed. Lastly, the bond program itself, the track athletic complex design was completed, as I mentioned last time. It went out for bid during the last month, and the bids came back last week Tuesday, and it was very competitive again, keeping the construction costs under budget, this is the first time we sat down with a budget, we haven't done some discussion about how we can trim it, so this is a good thing, again, we, competition is good sometimes, and so we're excited about this project, it's gonna be great for Grand Ledge and for our school district. Again, I think we're looking to begin this in late summer, August maybe, possibly, maybe a little late July, I'm not sure. We are also, all right now, we're for the upgrade of mechanical systems at the high school pool, which will become our community pool. That bid went out last Wednesday, so we didn't want to confuse the two issues, we did the athletic complex, and then we have the pool enhancement at Grand Ledge High School. And hopefully that's something that will be able to be done this summer. Lastly, the planning for the high school fine arts and athletic facility updates continue to develop, again, we're looking at construction for this in the fall, possibly October, so that's kind of my reports night, if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board?
All right, thanks so much.
Thank Dr. Johnson.
Welcome.
Our next report item, I think, is one obviously of significant interest, it's the GLPS Extended COVID nineteen Learning Plan Update. Dr. Barnes, I understand you'll lead this presentation, and this, this will be both, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the kind of monthly or periodic state required report and update as well as any changes, or maybe that's altogether what we're looking at, where we're headed from here as well.
Correct, this, this is the, this meets the monthly board meeting requirements, I'm going to share some data with you, and this is also the reauthorization, the monthly reauthorization of our return to school learning, or our return to learn plan. But I think Dr. Chapin's gonna start us off with a few remarks.
All right, I just want to make sure I, we got, I got a moment in there, so just to give credit where credit's due, and yes, Dr. Barnes will be on point tonight, and he's prepared some, some terrific slides that I think will be very helpful for the board and for the community, I just wanted to comment on the bond update, you know, as I watched, I just, just a, you know, just a guy here watching this develop, you know, the facilities in Grand Ledge are going to be enviable across the region, not just in this community, but that's, that's going to be a beautiful project and be part of this growth as these last eight or nine months has really been fun for me to see, a real source of pride for your community, and I just, I offer that, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the envy of, in the region, really special project, so I just add that. Listen, tonight's presentation, I'll get to Dr. Barnes in just a moment, this really is central to the, the metric, and a lot of talk about the metric, and I just kind of want to go back with a little history here. This was, of course, part of our commentary on March eighth at our last regularly scheduled meeting, we talked about moving off of our, our Safe Learning Guide to using some metric or a metric from the Center for Disease Control. And we referenced this several times during our March weekly memos, and of course, on March eighth, had a big presentation on this. What's fascinating is that we were working off of the metric that the Center for Disease Control had shared with schools across the country, across the nation, dated February twelfth. And as we were working, and Dr. Barnes will talk about this in a moment or two, literally on this presentation on Friday afternoon, in came the update to the update, and I just mentioned that because it's just sort of, I think illustrates the difficulty of working in this climate that we're in right now with a shifting context, a shifting landscape, and really, I'm kind of sharing this with the board, we would like to have you better prepared with information you're able to review for longer periods of time, but even dating back to our meeting on Wednesday with information coming from MDE and from the Health Department, literally the day of, here we were on Friday afternoon with more input from MDE and more input from CDC. So Bill has done a terrific job of capturing all of this, I think too, those that are planning on speaking in public comment, there's, there's a lot embedded here, and we would ask for you to, you know, tune in and make sure that you're tracking this, because it, it might well connect to comments that you want to make in public comment. And finally, I would just say that Bill represents, we want him, he's vetted this very well across the administrative staff and, and others, and I, I want him to know that he has our full support tonight, so with that, he doesn't need much more, this is in good hands, so off to you, Dr. Barnes, please.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Chapin, and I'm gonna share my screen here, so we can get through the slides together. One thing that I do want to preface the presentation with, though, is kind of the overarching theme, the thread that you'll see throughout the presentation, one of the issues that, that has emerged clearly over the last year is that we're all facing something that we have never faced before. So consequently, there's a wide range of opinions about how we should handle that, both in the broader society, and then of course, here within our school as well, and those opinions are formed by our experiences, our risk levels, our risk tolerance, and a host of other inputs that, that really affect the way that we think. So Grand Ledge Public Schools, we serve a wide array of constituents, and the opinions of those constituents help us to understand where stakeholders are and what they value, so they're important and they're appreciated. But as school leaders, it's important for us to make our decisions, especially large ones that impact not only the health and safety of our students and staff, but the community as a whole. And those can't be rooted in those opinions, but in the expertise of the scientists and the doctors whose work revolves around community health. So our presentation tonight asks you to consider the work of the experts that we have, which in this case is the CDC. You'll see that we've set up this discussion to be framed around our current realities, what the CDC says we should be doing, and as Dr. Chapin said, this is hot off the presses, they were updating, we couldn't pull things off the website when we were working on Friday afternoon, because the CDC was literally updating the website as we were working. And then how we respond to those recommendations of the district. So the plan we're proposing is rooted in the most up-to-date CDC metric and guidance available, along with what we know about best educational practices, and it allows us to use the public health experts' recommendation to build a program for our students that can carry us through the end of the year. So you'll see that this presentation is built around the CDC metric, is rooted in the CDC metric, and is therefore rooted in the science, the best science that we have available right now. But before we get into that, as Jared mentioned, this is the monthly update, so we were, we report our data during this update as well. So the first of those updates is our two-way communication logs, you can see from the end of January through the beginning of March, we maintain great engagement through our two-way logs, ninety-seven percent, ninety-four percent, then back up to ninety-seven percent again, so, so well over nine out of ten students are engaging through those two-way communication logs, and we can see that across all of our buildings, which is great to see. The other data piece that I wanted to update you with today is our window closed for our winter NWA. And if you recall, we've mentioned a couple times that part of the return to learn legislation requires us to do benchmark assessments at various times throughout the year and to show growth, so what this chart shows is on our NWEAA, the percentage of students that grew from the fall to the, to the winter assessment in RIT, in their RIT score, so what that means for those that, that aren't living NWA day in and day out, the RIT score is a band of scores where students are supposed to score, and so what we want to see is growth within that band, but we also want to see growth to new bands, and so that's what we're, we're showing here. So we can see in the chart, if you're looking at your screen like I am, on the left is by grade level, and if you're looking at the chart, which on my screen is on the right, you can see that is broken down by subgroup, these are the categories that are required to be reported on by MDE and the return to learn legislation, so this will go on our website this week sometime, we'll update the chart that we already have there, and then this will carry us through into the spring, and I know Jared mentioned spring assessments, there's a lot still in flux about what that looks like, so as we get more information about that, we will have one more data presentation for you sometime late spring, early summer, which will wrap this up nicely, but this is our mid-year update for you as well. So before I get into the, the CDC and our recommendation, are there any questions I can answer from the board around our data? Okay, thank you.
Yes, so the, we, sorry, I had a hard time finding my unmute button, despite the fact that I've lived in the software for a year. So, like our scores, the growth from fall to winter, how does this track versus other years?
So it's a little bit lower, we ran those numbers today as well, it is a little bit lower. I would expect that for two reasons, number one, this is a standardized test that was not given in a standardized way this year. So if you have, for example, artificially high scores in the fall, then the growth that you would see from the fall to the winter is going to be less. Or if you have students who are at home without support or that are struggling for various other reasons, you would also expect not to see as much growth on a test like NWA. I want to make it crystal clear, the, the word learning loss is, is out there. Students didn't lose learning this year, students learn differently, students learn different skills, but the, it's important to note that this is one measure, it's a standardized assessment that was not given in a standardized way this year. So keep that in mind, but the, the pure answer to your question is this growth is a little bit lower than what we've experienced in years past.
Okay, and the legislature's looking and getting rid of most of the other standardized tests this year, from what I understand?
So the, the quick thumbnail version of that is MDE requested a waiver, the waiver has The waiver has to be granted by the Federal Department of Education. The Federal Department of Education hasn't really said yes or no yet. And so right now, our principals are actively planning to give those assessments as required by law until somebody from M D E or the legislature says don't. We're required to do it. So we're in a strange sort of assessment limbo right now because the Federal Department of Education hasn't given a definitive answer either way. If you follow them on Twitter, they've said that that you still have to test, but they haven't given any details. So quite honestly, the the range of what could happen this spring go from not having to give those standardized tests all the way up to having to give them with accountability attached to them. And some of the things that have been floated in between is it might be optional. It might be something that's given in the fall. It might be something that is given at a different time this spring. So unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for that because we have not been given clear guidance yet.
Okay, thanks.
But we're actively planning. We're ready to go when they tell us what to do, but we we don't know what they're going to tell us to do yet.
Gotcha. And also, assessment limbo sounds like a terrible party game.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. It's not a fun place to be, I will tell you that. But our our professionals are handling it as you would expect top notch. So thank you for those questions. All right, so moving into context and recommendations. And as I mentioned in my my preface, I'm going to start by providing some context. And then I'm going to give you what the CDC says we should be doing. And then from there, I'm going to talk about how we can implement on the ground what the CDC says that we should do. So these things, if we've been following along, the folks listening at home and as a board, we know this. On February 8th, we approved the continuation of the Extended Learning Plan, which was an extension from December 14th, which was an extension from earlier in the year. And we had the targeted date of March 1st way back on February 8th. That seems like a lifetime ago. And we referenced in that presentation on February 8th, we should carry out the plan as long as the core indicators continue to decline or stay constant and secondary indicators continue their positive trend. So I just want to make clear what we're presenting tonight is what the CDC says we should be doing. The CDC has issued versions of guidance throughout the year, and we use those to try to piece together our own metric. And in doing so, we created an imperfect metric. They're all imperfect. But I just want to make clear that that's where that came from. So the CDC new guidance gives us a little more clarity than what we had on December 14th and even what we had on February 8th. So as we think about how fast this stuff moves, then the version that we are presenting to you tonight is an update of a version that wasn't available on February 8th. So if if that just kind of frames our thinking around how fast these things are moving. As of March 18th, we had nine students out of school district wide with positive tests. Thirty six students quarantined from exposure within the school and another eighteen students quarantined from exposure outside of the school. That's important to note because the more kids you have in school, the more that thirty six number goes up. And the more positive cases you have outside of school, the more the eighteen and the nine go up. So it's important for us as a as a board and as a leadership team to understand that. And and numbers have gone up since last week. And so there's there's a concern about that piece, obviously. But again, I want us to understand the reality of the situation that we're facing on the grounds currently. So operationally, as we've moved throughout the winter and here into the spring, the secondary indicators began to figure more heavily into our mode of instruction, the core indicators, as it began to trend in a positive direction in early February. Vaccine rates, CDC guidance and state and federal recommendation. If you remember from our February 8th presentation, vaccine, the first vaccine was given on December 14th, which is when the plan was originally approved. So these secondary indicators have taken an increased importance as we move throughout the winter because more things have come out, more things have been made available, more guidance has been given. So it's also important to note from a context perspective that the core indicators, which are in our metric, have steadily increased since their low point on February 17. So on February 17th, when we communicated, it was eighty three cases per million. And in our last communication last Wednesday, it was two hundred and eight. And we had a four point five positivity rate in February, on February 17th. And when Dr. Chapin communicated last week, we communicated a six point seven percent. So that's that's not a good community trend right now. However, on the other side of that, secondary indicators like vaccination rates have maintained their positive trend, although these core indicators haven't. So we've seen more people get vaccinated. We've continued to see new guidance come out. We've continued to see support from M D H H S and the governor's office to have students in in person school. Some additional influences, and again, this is very familiar to all of us. It was just last week. We improved the plan that increased in person instruction based on P A three. And it's important to note, because I think there there might be some confusion around this out there. This plan meets the letter of the law and M D E guidance as we are implementing tutoring centers this week. On March 19th, which was Friday, M D E released a frequently asked questions document and outlined how this law should be implemented and what counts as in person instruction and what doesn't. Our plan firmly falls in the what counts as in person instruction and firmly meets the letter of the law. So if there was any any concern about that, we need to put that at rest because the M D E guidance and the legislation clearly shows that we have met the letter of the law. And that was released again on Friday for implementation on Monday morning. So we we got out ahead of that, but but again, it's an indication of the timeframes within which we're working. We also had a letter from the Health Department that was issued to Dr. Rice and shared with the board. And that letter stated the specific outbreak doesn't rise to the level where we recommend returning all students to virtual instruction. That's an important statement. However, we support the proposal to delay in an increase in in person instruction to reduce exposure over the next two weeks. That was written on March 17th. Reducing exposure during this time by maintaining a hybrid schedule will reduce the likelihood of a new outbreak within the school system. So that is quoted from the Health Department. Now, this slide, this took some doing because this is a really interesting way of thinking about this. But one of the the things that's important for everybody at home and also for all of us in leadership roles to understand is the competing directives that we are currently being given and that we are currently trying to work through as a board and as an administrative team. So for example, P A three required us to offer twenty hours by March 22nd. But the Barry Eaton Health Department issued the letter that said that they they or they supported a delay in that increase. That same P A three asked us to offer twenty hours by this week. Our Safe Return Guide, which we've been using since December, has core indicators that are not currently being met. The core indicators in our return to learn plan set thresholds for in person and virtual learning. But the core indicators are not currently aligned with the yellow face. And we know this and we've talked about it. It's because of those secondary indicators. And again, imperfect metric, an attempt to quantify some of these things, but it does create the space for some contradictions. Another one is the core indicators set the thresholds for in person and virtual learning. But the phase mitigation plan, which was updated on the 26th and then again on March 19th, makes different recommendations than our return to learn guide. Another one of these things is the CDC says athletics should be held outdoors with more than six feet of social distancing and high transmission and in substantial transmission. We're in high transmission right now. The CDC says we should be outdoors in six feet. But the governor's office and M D H H S have issued different guidance, which is that we should be following M H S A guidance, which is masking and now some new testing protocols. And then we are able to participate in athletics. The CDC also issued new guidance, as I mentioned, and Dr. Chapin mentioned, on Friday afternoon. So the version of this PowerPoint that you are going to get on Friday is very different than the one you're getting tonight because the guidance was updated. So that that's a a piece that we have to keep track of. We've been rooted in the CDC guidance all year. And our leadership team has been committed to engaging stakeholders, including teacher support, staffs and families in planning. So the idea that we can just take new guidance on Friday afternoon and be ready to implement on Monday is a challenge because we value the input of multiple stakeholders in in developing those plans. And then that new guidance on athletics and all these other pieces came out again on Friday afternoon. But M D H H S and the local health departments have not officially adopted the new CDC guidance. So although CDC put guidance on their website, our Health Department and the rest of M D H H S have not fully adopted that guidance, which means that they're still operating on the February 26th update. So again, as we try to plan for a 5,000 student district, there's a lot of competing things happening. And so one of the things that we want to do tonight is to help simplify this so that everybody understands exactly what we're doing and we root that in the science and in the research.
Beth Burns?
Yes.
Can I interrupt briefly? This is Denise. Could you just clarify for those listening what the new testing parameters are for athletics that were implemented? I believe that was the March 19th implementation date.
I would love to, but we have not been given that guidance yet. So quite honestly, that that could have been a slide in and of itself. I Steve Baker, our athletic director and his coaches have done an amazing job of trying to keep up with with the changing things and keep keep kids safe. Masking is a requirement still that will continue to be a requirement. There are some some preliminary guidance that says kids are going to have to be tested every day. There's some that said it's going to be once a week, and there's some that is before contests. So that we don't have a sense yet of exactly what that is going to be. And different agencies are interpreting that in different ways. So when we met this morning, again, Mr. Baker, our A D is is on top of it. He gets updates from his group. And as soon as we have that, then we will implement what M D H H S asks us to do as as we have done throughout the year. But I appreciate that question.
Thank you.
Yep. So when we sat down and looked at the the survey that we sent out to families and and the the number of families that wanted their students back in school, looked at what was on that previous slide with the pink arrows and started to think about how we could proceed from here. We identified and solved these 10 problems. And what I'm going to share with you in just a minute talks about how we solve these 10 problems. So number number one, how do we bring students into into the building safely? When there's not an overwhelming majority. We're sitting somewhere between sixty and seventy percent in person, somewhere between forty, thirty and forty percent virtual. So if it's ninety ten, that's it's pretty easy. But when you're sitting in this this strange place where it's it's still one out of every three kids wants to remain virtual, it does create some scheduling things that we have to overcome, which I think we have done. Principals, teachers and families value classrooms staying together for the remainder of the year. When we looked at the possibility of having to break up elementary classrooms for essentially the month of April and May, that was a real struggle for our elementary teachers and our elementary principals and our middle school teams as well, because that would have meant having to break up middle school classes also. High school is in a different boat because they switch classes at trimester. Splitting elementary students into full virtual and full in person classes creates issues in three section grade levels. So we could do that, but then if you have a three section grade level in a building where you have three teachers in one grade, it makes the numbers go exceedingly high. So you'd be putting thirty or thirty two, say, sixth graders in one in person classroom. And we were not comfortable doing that. And then splitting middle school into full virtual and full in person classrooms has some of those same issues, but then layers on top of it elective issues because students would have to, in some cases, repeat electives and in some cases, not get the electives they asked for. So it really wreaked havoc with the schedule when we looked at trying to do that. In addition, we are committed to maintaining maximum distance as possible as long as the CDC metric suggests it. One of the things you'll see when I share this with you is that if you can't cohort, they still recommend six feet. And if you can cohort, they recommend three feet. And and that varies depending on the grade level and some other things. But that still means limiting the number of students who are together at one time. Our current yellow phase, though, is unsustainable with the elementary and middle school numbers. So the way we're running yellow now can't be done with sixty five to seventy percent of the students in it. So we have to do something different. Number seven, the high school created a master schedule to differentiate in person and virtual sections with an increase of students in their classes at the same time until the sixty percent capacity is removed in the blue yellow face. So we can't have all of the in person high school students in the building at the same time and still maintain what the CDC is asking us to maintain. Multi grade level placements. So if we had moved to a full in person and virtual environment for K eight, we would end up having to to have multi grade level virtual classrooms, which is not good for the for the students, not good for the teachers, not good for education. We could fix that by having huge virtual sections. And again, this goes back to the seventy thirty sixty five thirty five split. But we'd be looking at class sizes of forty five or fifty in a virtual classroom, and that's not educationally sound either. And then finally, we we have really great teachers assistants. But if we split up into virtual and in person sections, that would potentially cause our best virtual T A's, the ones that that do a great job working with those virtual students to not be able to work with virtual students anymore. And so this, the way I'm going to talk about this, it allows all of our T A's to work with both sets of kids. It allows our teachers to work with both sets of kids in a meaningful way. So with those things in mind, we created some some values. What what are we going to root this planning in? And so what we came up with is that we are committed for the rest of this year to providing focused learning time with a teacher for in person and virtual students. We did not want to create a model that prioritized one over the other. Virtual students deserve time with their teacher and in person students deserve time with their teacher. We needed to provide an opportunity to cohort whenever available, and I'm going to show you the CDC definition of cohort here in just a minute. We need to maintain social distancing as much as possible. And we need to provide space and support for teachers to meet students' needs. We it's important that that our educators have the tools they need to do this work as well. So those are the problems we solved, and these are the driving factors that went into our plan. And so with that, I want to talk to you about what we are recommending to you tonight, which is that we recommend that the board approves the Extended Learning Plan to include the guidance from Table Two, which is the recommended prevention strategies for K 12 schools and levels of community transmission from the March 19th, 2021 report, unless schools are specifically directed otherwise from local, state and or national authorities. So there are a multitude of authorities right now that are weighing in, as I showed you. If we are given a specific directive from the local or state level or even national, we need to follow that directive. And so we provided for you, board members, the link to this page. So you can actually see everything that the CDC has written. But I am going to go through each chunk of this Table Two for you as well here in just a minute. So in order to meet those requirements as presented, we offer the following proposal. First terms and definitions, cohorting means that you keep the same group of kids together all day. So this works pretty well in the elementary schools with the exception of lunch and recess. It's much more difficult at the secondary level with changing classes. In middle and high school, six feet is recommended in areas of high community transmission, which is us right now. Unless they can implement cohorting, schools may consider reduced attendance, hybrid instruction or other strategies to ensure six feet of distance. That's what we're doing. There is no way in a school you can guarantee that kids are going to stay six feet away from each other all day. But we can set up our classrooms to maximize that as much as possible. Middle and high school students in area of high community transmission, again, that's us, should implement cohorting if they are using less than six feet. If cohorting is not possible, then we should have that that distance between them. And you'll see in our plan that we are able to do that again as best we can. School officials should implement limits on spectators and attendees for sports and ensure six feet of distance and masks. And then schools could consider using screening testing for student athletes and adults, which again, we're we're awaiting the specific guidance, but that's what M D H S, the governor's office are asking M H S A to do. So that's how CDC is defining those terms. That's a lot of information. But when you see them in my next slides, at least you'll have some sense of where those are coming from. So in red, which is where we are now, that means one thou or over one hundred new cases per 1,000 people in the last seven days and a greater than 10% positivity rate. And I want to call attention to this. I'll only do it this time, but it's important to note. The old number we were using and we were reporting on Wednesdays was average cases per million over a seven day timeframe. The CDC says we should be looking at the total number of cases per 100,000 over a seven day timeframe. It's a different number. So I want to make sure that the board is clear on that. This is a different number than the one we've been reporting. So I want to make sure that the board is clear on that. This is a different number than the one we've been reporting. Because this is the one that the CDC says we should be using. So in red, elementary schools should have physical distancing of at least three feet between students in classrooms and cohorting when possible. Middle and high schools should have physical distancing, cohorting when possible. Schools that use cohorting at least three feet of distancing, schools that can't use cohorting at least six feet of distancing. And sports and extracurricular activities should occur only if they can be held outdoors with more than six feet. This is the pure CDC recommendation from their metric, copied and pasted directly from their website and and shared with you here. So that being said, the way that Grand Ledge Public Schools is proposing to manage red. If one or both indicators are red, then we will coordinate with Barry Eaton Health to determine where the community spread is located. And to seek a recommendation on the course of action for the district, given the current conditions. Ultimately, it's our decision to make, but Barry Eaton Health Department has a great handle on where the spread is happening. What parts of the community it's happening in and and they've been wonderful partners in this and they need to continue to be partners in the red phase. The consultation will happen prior to Dr. Chapin's weekly communication. And it'll be reflected in that document, but we may need to communicate at other times as well. So in red, community spread is high and we need to be on high alert and in pretty constant communication with our health department. So if based on the Barry Eaton Health Department recommendations, we continue with in-person instruction in all or some of the buildings. The following mitigation strategies will be used. Number one, masks, everybody wears mask. Number two, we physical distance to the extent that we possibly can, that's at three and six feet. Wash our hands, we clean between uses and contact tracing has to continue to happen. So if we are in red, we're proposing that Fridays remain virtual to assist with mitigation strategies and to limit contact. So when we are in red, the opportunity for kids to come in contact with individuals with COVID nineteen increase. And so by reducing one day in person, that reduces that chance by twenty percent. High school cohorting, so we stick with the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. But we in add an optional Friday session where students can can come in and get additional support academically, socially, emotionally. Since lunch and recess at the elementary level and the schedule at the middle school and lunch and passing time at the high school, break up cohorts. It's important to maintain as much distance as possible. Therefore, K twelve will cap class sizes at sixty percent of contractual limits in order to maintain opportunities for distancing. So what I will say is that the principals right now are working with teachers to figure out how to maximize that opportunity. So it might be that we have some students who are. Who are doing homework in a different place. It might be that they're working outside. It might be that we have numbers below sixty percent already. And I will tell you that this applies to a handful of classrooms across the district. And the principals have plans to deal with each one of these situations. And then MDHHS and the governor's office have issued guidance on athletics that allows them to take place under the guidelines issued by the M H S A. So we will continue to follow the guidance as we have since last summer outlined in our recommendation. And athletics will continue with those increased protocols. So that being said, a schedule would look like this. So if I'm a K six student. In person from eight fifty five to ten o'clock, I'm doing asynchronous virtual work. I'm at home. Ten fifteen is when in-person learning begins, so my school day starts at ten fifteen. I am at school from ten fifteen to three fifteen, which is a pretty big increase in time over the week. Because this is a four-day-a-week plan, remember? So if I'm a kid who's in person K six, I'm at school from ten fifteen to three fifteen in red Monday through Thursday. And because we know that some students are going to need some additional support, we'll also offer interventions at lunch. In-person students will have a combination of in-person and virtual specials based on the schedule and time slots available. It is important to note that because of busing, NEF would start fifteen minutes earlier than this and get it done fifteen minutes earlier. So there's to be ten to three. But if in a classroom, if a classroom has more than fourteen B K or nineteen K six, which is that sixty percent. Principals and teachers will work to develop a plan for helping to make sure that we're keeping that sixty percent cap. This puts us at twenty hours, which means the letter of the law for P A three. And a sample teacher's schedule is there on the other side of the screen. So that teacher would have targeted time to work with their virtual students from eight fifty five to ten fifteen. And there's a built-in transition time there for the teacher to to move from virtual learning to in-person learning. They would be with their in-person students from ten fifteen to three fifteen. And then again, from three fifteen to the end of the day with a built-in transition time, they would have their synchronous lessons and then Friday would be virtual learning. At the middle school, similar concept. The the school day would go from seven forty to one o'clock for in-person students. So from seven forty to one o'clock, students would follow their regular schedule. They would rotate through their classes. They'd go home at one o'clock and they would have asynchronous work from one to two twenty five. If I'm a virtual student, I do my asynchronous work from seven forty to one. And then from one to two thirty five, I work with my virtual or work with my teacher in synchronous lessons. On a Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday rotation and also on Fridays. There are, there's some nuances around the elective schedules. And so the principals at the middle school have done a great job of working with their staff to help. To help come up with a schedule that gets everybody synchronous and asynchronous time and does so within the the confines of our contract and and best practices. Again, if it if we have a classroom over twenty, the principals are working on a plan with those teachers. To make sure that we keep that sixty percent cap so that we're following the CDC guidance as very best we can. And this actually puts us over. Over the twenty one hours and or over the twenty hours at twenty one. And and again, like at the elementary, we can work through some interventions at lunch if students need to. So there again, we would see the teacher's schedule. The high school student's schedule looks similar as it does now with the option of coming in on Fridays. So it's the Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, which allows us to cohort. Again, following what the CDC says we should be doing. And then if I'm a virtual student, I have Monday through Friday virtual, excuse me, virtually. And and students are coming in on that every other day session. So moving to orange. And I'll, I know this is a ton of information. I will pause for questions here in a second. But I want to make sure we understand how these are all connected. So orange is substantial transmission. That's fifty to ninety nine new cases and an eight to nine point nine percent positivity rate. You can see here, the guidance is very similar to red. Physical distancing cohorting when possible. At the elementary and at the middle school and high school, similar guidance with athletics. So our guidance here is very similar. With the exception, you can see in number one, if both indicators are orange or one is orange and the other one is yellow and blue. We would just continue on that consultation with the Barry Eaton Health Department. Is going to continue in the background, but it's not as intense as what we would, we would normally be doing. So that looks very similar to to where we are in red because the recommendations are very similar to where we are in red. And so the schedule would be the same. So we would have the same schedule in red and in orange that for all the buildings that remain open. So again, if we have to close down because of cases or because of recommendations from other agencies. We would do that, but otherwise everybody would be continued to be open. So we move to yellow, yellow, we start to get out of the woods. In yellow, it's ten to forty nine new cases and a five to seven point nine percent positivity rate. So cohorting is no longer re- recommended here. Basically, it's just keeping the three feet distance as available in all instances. So when we move to yellow. The sixty percent language goes away. Which allows for high school students to come back five days a week. So if I'm an in-person high school student, we move to yellow, they come back all day, every day. The K eight students would maintain that current schedule because we still have those virtual students that we're going to be working with. But we add Fridays now on that same schedule, so we increase the amount of in-person opportunity at that point. And we don't have the the sixty percent cap and we continue to follow M H S A guidance as it is presented to us. So hours from the red and orange remain in place. BK eight, the sixty percent cap no longer applies. We move to Fridays now, so we're five days a week instead of just four. And we'll continue with our virtual students learning virtually. At the high school, we moved to five days a week for in-person students, full-on schedule to seven forty to or seven fifty five to two forty five. We no longer have the sixty percent cap and virtual students maintain their virtual learning. And then we moved to blue, we're really out of the woods. This is zero to nine new cases, less than five percent positivity rate. Basically, we're back to sort of normal operation. Again, much like this looks just like yellow, we would no longer have cohorting. We would continue, however, to use the mitigation strategies that the CDC recommends. Asking distancing as much as possible, hand washing, cleaning and contact tracing. And then students would maintain the same schedule as they would in yellow in this phase. So before we get into some questions, I do want to talk about benefits and shortcomings. Benefits, all teachers have dedicated time to work with students in person and provide synchronous lessons for virtual students. That is important. We wanted to make sure that that stayed true from now till the end of the year. All students virtually and in person have dedicated time with their teachers. We can maintain our student and teacher relationships in K eight. We don't have to break up the cohorts and have students have new teachers for the last two months of the year. All students who want to come back in person and filled that survey out prior to March fifth. Have the opportunity to be in the building with their teachers. Our move between CDC levels is seamless from an instructional perspective. So if we're in red today, in orange tomorrow, and then next week we're able to communicate we're in yellow. That transition can happen without too much interruption. On the flip side of that, if a quarantine has to happen or if a student is required to quarantine, I shared those numbers with you. If more students are required to quarantine, under this plan, K eight, BK eight. It's a very seamless transition from being an in-person student to having to quarantine for ten days to being back to an in-person student. But as I said, I'm not in any way, shape or form saying this is a perfect proposal. We do have some limited instructional time, K eight, that's baked into the plan. Students all have built-in asynchronous learning time. We love to be in a spot where everybody had synchronous learning time. But we just don't, this this plan does not account for that. With the increased days per week and increased number of students, we may not be able to effectively transport all students who need it. That's a purposely vague statement. I'll be honest. Pete is doing it out buckles, our transportation director is doing an outstanding job. He sent an email today and said, hey, I think we can, we can transport everybody, but it might be some long bus rides. They're still running the numbers and so as we move through this week, we would be communicating with families once we get to that point. It is also important to note that we're increasing the number of students in classrooms and in buildings. Which creates logistical challenges for lunch recesses, contact tracing and quarantines. I'm going to tell you, I don't know that people outside of the school district realize the amount of work that goes into contact tracing. If a student or a staff member is positive onsite. It's hours worth of work for our principals and for Cindy Brummett, our nurse. With seating charts, with contacts, with contacting parents, with explaining quarantines. And so the more people you have in one space, the more of those quarantines that are going to exist. So when we look at, for example, a situation where we had a couple of classrooms that had to move virtual. There were six or so kids in those classrooms, which meant less than twenty students had to move entirely to virtual. Under this proposal, in an elementary classroom, you could have had nineteen kids per classroom. So if that whole classroom shut down, now you go from eighteen kids that had to stay home for ten days. To close to sixty kids that would have to stay home for ten days. So that is a a risk when you increase the number of students in a room. And then moving back and forth virtual to in-person creates a bigger logistical challenge, obviously for high school students. So with that being said, what happens on April fifth, which is the date that we've been using? Assuming that's the date we want to continue where we ramp up in person and welcome back the students that said they wanted to on March fifth. Based on our current numbers, we are in red high transmission phase in Eaton County. We can track the numbers at this link, which informs the CDC guidance. So we're sharing that with the board so you know where these numbers are coming from. On April fifth, we would implement our red plan, which would include consultation with the Barry Eaton Health Department around case numbers. And location of community spread and make targeted decisions about what we would need to do with that information. But if all things being equal, all students who requested in-person learning on our latest survey would attend in person. Based on the red schedule presented here, which again is firmly rooted in what the CDC says we ought to be doing. So with that, and again, tons of information, I would welcome at this time. Questions, comments, thoughts and feedback from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Barnes. I'm guessing there'll be a few. I don't, who would like to start?
I'll go ahead and start. I guess I I want to start by thanking you because I think this is, you know, an imp- an impossible task. You were given, you know, basically less than a business day to come up with this plan. Based on what the CDC's new guidance was. I know we've heard from community members in the past who have asked, you know, why don't we have a plan or, you know, can't you make the switch? And I think this demonstrates why this is so challenging for the CDC. To tell you on Friday afternoon to come up with a plan for immediately. And so I want to thank you for kind of putting this together. I mean, I guess just to kind of foreshadow where I am, I think that, you know, at this point, the CDC has given us recommendations. That's not something that I feel, you know, comfortable second guessing. And so at this point, I would, you know, be in support of the plan. And I also want to point out, because I know, you know, we've heard this from several community members. You know, hospitalizations, cases, positivity, deaths, those are all up right now in Michigan. You know, I think we were all really hopeful when we moved into the yellow phase, that we were kind of on the downward trend. And unfortunately, things haven't kept on going, you know, things are not continuing in a positive direction. I also want to point out that, you know, Lansing Public Schools right now is delayed. They have nobody in person. Oakhamus, Haslett, East Lansing, Mason, Waverly. Those are districts that are local to us that did not have students that are back in buildings five days a week. Ann Arbor, still not back. Kalamazoo is not going back at all this school year. And so, you know, at this point, I think you've done kind of the impossible task here. I know that it's not going to please everybody and no plan is perfect. But I commend you for putting this together on such short notice in a way that seems to go with. You know, the feedback from everybody and I guess my, you know, so that's my speech, I guess. But my question is, I know we've been working with a committee of folks, you know, who are stakeholders and they weren't given really. You know, nobody was given time to react to what the CDC says. But how does kind of the the perspective that we've gotten from like the Safe Return Committee kind of inform the decisions that have been made here? And and maybe you can give us some insight to how those conversations have gone and how those stakeholders have kind of informed the the plan that you developed.
So first of all, the 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 skeleton of the plan was in place prior to Friday afternoon. So then the new guidance with the distancing and some of those other things did cause a tweak to that. The CDC guidance wasn't so different that we had to scrap what we had been planning. It allowed us to to tweak that. So the. The next steps group, we talked through on just last Thursday. With the problems we were trying to solve with the goals that we were presenting, that that. The sort of driving statement slide I shared with you. And then the skeleton of of what we were thinking here. So Friday afternoon caused the update. Saturday, I I was here for a while in in the office, putting those updates in. But the the skeleton of the plan in terms of hours and some of those things were were in place. As we moved into the new CDC guidance. So the the overview from the CDC too, just to be clear, has always been, I think Nicole, you made this point. Wear masks, social distance, wash your hands, contact trace and so on. And so. That allowed us to plan a little bit, but yes, it was a, it was an update over the weekend, so I appreciate that. So the the next steps group had a chance to weigh in and I will tell you, one of the the big pieces that we've heard quite a bit. Is whatever we root our next phase in from April to the end of the year. Root it in science, root it in a clear metric that everybody can see and understand. root it in science, root it in a clear metric that everybody can see and understand and know where you got the information from. And that was really been the driving force be, behind adopting what CDC gave us. And quite honestly, if CDC had given us that document in December or earlier, we could have rooted it in, in it then, but we just didn't, we didn't have it at that time. So we did the best we could. But, but the big message we've gotten and, and Dr. Chapin or any of the other administrators on, on the call here, please correct me if I'm wrong, but, but rooting it in something and rooting it in science has been important. And so that's where the, the CDC became the driving factor behind this proposal.
Other questions? I think, Dr. Chapin, yeah.
Yeah, well, I was actually going to defer to Mr. DuFort. You might represent, represent the Next Steps Advisory Group. To hear from you, I, I defer to you.
Okay. I believe that several of the, the issues that were brought up by the Next Step Committee were addressed in this new proposal. The change to kindergarten programming was something that was mentioned at that meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure if this was mentioned in the meeting, but I know that there were some concerns about teacher prep time from moving from virtual to in-person and vice versa. There wasn't any originally built in. That is now built in. One of the main things that we heard over and over again was keeping classes together with their teacher. And that is obviously in this program. And again, the, the metric. And one of the things I like about the metric is that it is in fact clear for any circumstances from now to the end of the year. So we don't have to hopefully go back and revisit this with any major changes for the rest of the year. Certainly, we will revisit it on a monthly basis as we are tasked to do by the Michigan Department of Education. But those were some of the things that were addressed. And I think that this plan does a great job with those. I agree with everyone else that it is not perfect. There is no such thing that this seems to be a good compromise.
I'll go next, I guess. Yeah, I want to thank Dr. Barnes, Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Chapin for the work they put into this. It might have been divine intervention that they released it on Friday. And, but it looks like a great plan. I think it's important the community knows that when they keep asking us about these, you know, unattainable numbers, you know, if God forbid something were to happen and someone were to ask us, why did you have your schools open? And what did you base that information off of? I think it's very important that we have a solid foundation of why we make the decisions we do. So I want to thank you for that. Just a real quick correction, Miss Shannon, East Lansing is five days a week now. They did change starting today to align with the new law. And I know that Okemos did the same thing. I don't know whether they had to push it to, to five days, but I do know that's what East Lansing is doing. All students are now five days a week. So a few questions for Dr. Barnes. First of all, really appreciate that the students can seamlessly move back and forth from in-person to online. And I think that's really important when we're offering options to our families. If the numbers get to a point where they do not feel comfortable, they have that opportunity to move their students to online without missing a beat, and then perhaps back in person if that's what they chose to do initially. So I appreciate that part of the plan. So on Fridays, is it correct that K eight is all synchronous?
So on, on Fridays, we had, we did not spell that out in this plan. The, the, the expectation is that there would be synchronous lessons, but also there'd be asynchronous lessons, and it would vary depending on whatever it is that the, the students are working on. So we did not specifically say, teacher A, you've got to be synchronous from eight to twelve or whatever. We've left that to the discretion of the teacher. I also do want to point out too, I think it's important to note that there, there are logistical challenges, even K eight, for, for large groups of students to move in-person or virtual because of, of scheduling and numbers and all the rest of those things. So when we talk about the ability to seamlessly move, that's really centered around quarantines. Now, if there is a situation where a family feels like they made the wrong choice, then that, that is a conversation they need to have with the principal. But based on numbers, there's no guarantee that we can accommodate that for two reasons. Number one, if, if we get a whole bunch of kids that want to come back in person that originally picked virtual, that pushes us against that sixty percent cap. But on the other hand, one of the benefits of this is that if I'm a elementary teacher, I might have six or seven virtual students that I'm working with in those two timeframes, which is much easier to manage than thirteen or fourteen. So, so I just want to make that clear. And I know my, my, my elementary principal colleagues would want me to have clarified that as well, so everybody understands what, what we were talking about there.
I, and I guess I, I should have been more clear. I think the, the students that initially chose in-person could, could pull back a little bit because their spot is saved. Is that correct?
Yes, the, so, so again, I would say have a conversation with your building principal. Because again, it's going to depend on section numbers and all the rest of those things. We'd really like people to stick with what they picked. But we do understand that circumstances change, and we do understand there are individual circumstances. And I will say, in this model, it is easier to do that than it would be if we had split into virtual and in-person.
Okay. Okay. I would just kind of note maybe to the building principals, I would advocate, and the rest of the board can weigh in on this, for as much synchronous time on Fridays as possible. These kids, you know, want to see their teachers, want to hear from their teachers. I think if we, if we say it can be asynchronous, I think we're probably going to get more of that than, than synchronous. So I would advocate for Fridays to be more synchronous, you know, whatever that looks like. But I think leaving it up in the air, sometimes, you know, the students lose on that. I would advocate for the students be able to see their teachers five days a week, even if it's online. And then one final question, Dr. Barnes. So when we make a recommendation moving forward, are we making a recommendation based on what the color is that day of the board meeting? Because we had eighteen days of blue, we had some yellow, we had two days of orange, and we've had one day of red. Which, you know, is, is important, but are we making the recommendations moving forward based on what it is on that board day? Because the last eighteen days says we should be in orange if you average out the, the numbers. So I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just asking, is the recommendation coming based on the day of the board meeting?
You know, that's a outstanding question. So, so if I can paraphrase and, and send it back, it's what, how are we deciding if we're in red, orange, yellow, or blue? When are we deciding that? And how are we communicating it? That's a, that is a great question. I will say internally, the way we've discussed that, and Dr. Chapin, please weigh in if I'm wrong, is that we're going to continue the weekly communications leading up to the, leading up to the end of the school year. I think particularly early on here, we're going to err on the side of caution. But as we start to look at those trends and, and get better at reading these numbers, you know, what we don't want to do is say, hey, everybody, we're in, we're in yellow because last Tuesday was yellow, but then we've, we've been in orange ever since. So part of that's going to be coordination with our health department. Part of it's going to be looking at the way the numbers are. And, and then, you know, thi- this thing has gone in trends. So, and I think Dr. Chapin has said all the way along, we're not going to be in, in one color on Friday and another on Monday and, and just jump. So we're going to, we'll, we'll be slow and methodical about how we communicate with that with families. So I don't want to speak for you though, Dr. Chapin, so I will.
Well, then, no, you can, first of all, Bill, thank you very, you did a really nice job tonight. People like detail and, you know, it's really hard to explain all of a detail in a board meeting like this. Our teachers take this and do wonderful things with a frame. But Bill, thank you. You did a really, really nice job tonight. And I for one appreciated your, your commentary along the way, along with the slides. So back, Pat, I think that's a really good question. And the reality is, the data right now is real jumpy. Let's, let's face it. When we started the Wednesday communications after the Wednesday Health Department meeting, we had made a decision administratively for the sake of family planning that we would project out essentially twelve days. So we would communicate on a Wednesday for the week of, not the next week, but the following week. And we were able to follow that pattern for the last three months or so. So that in, in less, you know, that's kind of our, 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 our plan right now. I mean, that's worked for us in the past. I'm a little concerned about the jumpy nature of this data right now. Looking at the charts like we do almost every day, these spikes are pretty concerning. So I think the best way to answer that question tonight is to simply say that we will plan on communicating on Wednesdays for twelve days out. Unless there's a real significant spike and we have to make a decision. It won't be my plan or our plan at this point unless otherwise directed to, you know, convene a meeting of the board to make that decision. Rather, we want the metric to guide it, and we'll follow that twelve-day rule unless we determine that's just really difficult to follow. But I think that's the best answer tonight. And until we get a better read on the data, especially post-spring break, I don't think we can answer that any better than, than simply saying that. Frankly, I do plan on writing on Wednesday, two days from now, with the plan on the week of April fifth to be in the red, simply because I project that's where the numbers will be. We won't communicate during spring vacation, but we'll say on what would be March twenty-fourth, the plan for April fifth, based on board approval, pending board approval tonight, is that we would be in the red. And here's the, here's, here's the marching orders for the red. And then pick it up, what would be April seventh, with another communication that would kick out into mid-April. But that's as well as I can do tonight. This data is pretty, pretty challenging to read right now. So.
Well, and, and we've gotten pretty good at figuring out, you know, looking at the seven-day average and all the rest of those things. The CDC though has us looking at adding up the seven days. So that's a different way. We've, we got to shift our mindsets as well in terms of how we're reading that data. So that, that will be a shift for us in terms of making some of those decisions as well.
The, the numbers will be similar. You know, the, 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 the number on the safe start mat is going to be similar to the number in term, the new case number and the positive, and the positivity rate, just the way it's played out, similar, not exact. So I think that's where we are right now.
I, I think I saw Mr. Quiney getting ready, but just, just to hand, nail this point down. The proposal tonight is to vote on this. This is the plan that would carry us through the year. Not necessarily voting on a color code tonight. It's more of, this is our layout for making those decisions going forward in those Wednesday communications, barring some drastic reason that brings us back together to modify.
Well said. Yep.
Mr. Quiney?
Thank you, President or Vice President. I've got four or five questions. I'll try to hit them off early here though. So, Dr. Barnes, pardon my ignorance, but is the, is the state mandating this plan?
I, I don't, no. No, like I said at the beginning, like, the, everything is coming in the form of recommendations.
Okay.
I was not comfortable bringing a recommendation to you that was not grounded in public health experts saying this is what we should be doing. So this is, this is grounded in what the CDC says schools ought to be doing.
So some schools may be adopting this. Some schools may not be. Some schools might take a hybrid approach with it. Use some of it, not use some of it.
Correct.
Okay. And it appears to me, and maybe I'm wrong, but the, the, the metric, for lack of a better term, is that just what I would call from our previous metric, core indicators being used?
So, I know, we're thinking about it a little bit differently than our, our previous metric. Because what our previous metric did is it said, here's the numbers, here's a color, and then we had to kind of figure out what to do in that color. So the way I'm, or we collectively are presenting it tonight is the, the numbers are here.
Yep.
So the secondary indicators are what the CDC says we should be doing. And so that's what we do. So, so things like vaccination rates and, and all those, while they are important, the, the sort of fuzziness that they created in our previous metric is not there in this one.
That's what I did. So they, they line up the numbers, or the numbers are what they are, just like in the old metric.
Yep.
Maybe differently phrased or whatever, but the, the numbers are lined up. And then it tells you what to do with those numbers. But there's really no, what, what, for lack of a better term, what we had before, a secondary core, a, a secondary indicator.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Because the, the CDC recommends that we are running in-person instruction, quite frankly, unless a, a state agency tells us not to. Which is, which is really why, how we tried to capture that, at least in the red. So while our old metric had a red out, a yellow kind of in, and a green all in, this is, this is operating under the assumption that our base plan has an in-person and a virtual option. But there's variation within that based on community spread and based on input from all the other agencies that are providing us input.
That's my next question. So the, did I hear you correct, or did I see it correct? That there would be a weekly letter or recommendation from the Barry Eaton Health Department?
So there would be weekly collaboration. So I, I would not anticipate they're going to write a letter every week. But we're, particularly when community spread is high, there's pretty constant communication with them. But what we would be committing to as a district is if we are in red, that conversation will happen. Now, if, I mean, as the Board of Education, if you wanted that more formalized or less formalized, you, you obviously have the, the, I don't, you have the authority to, to tell us to do that. But in the red, in the red, the idea would be that we would expect to coordinate, communicate with the Health Department, understand where the spread is, understand what the numbers mean. And that, that, that would be a more formalized piece of our work when we, our numbers are as high as they are right now. So as it gets to orange and yellow and, and blue, we probably don't need to do that every week. But right now, we do.
So if we, if we started in red and, you know, we're, we're, we're doing the plan, and then there is an outbreak or an uptick, or however they want to characterize it, they could make a recommendation or in collaboration, say we shouldn't be open. Right?
Yeah, I can, let me answer that. I can, let me help with that. I mean, first of all, we're not going to get a, a weekly letter from the Health Department. That letter was very unique to a collision of Public Act III, a very short timeline, and a lot of it went out jointly from the School District and the Health Department about the presence of a variant three weeks ago and the heightened anxiety. And I asked for some clarification from the Health Department as I explained on Wednesday, and they provided that information from, for us. That was very unique to that.
Worried about that letter.
Well, I mean, but I think I just want to clarify, there will not be a weekly letter from the Health Department. But there is, and there has been, a weekly meeting designed for Eaton, Risa, School Districts, Personnel to review the data, to provide an opportunity for Q and A. And I've always waited for after that meeting to send the letter out to the community. So the Health Department is, you know, they'll use the word partner several times. They continue as a great partner. The other thing I'd say here, Ben, I mean, I, I really appreciate your questions. It's always been our intent to not move forward and then move back. And so far, we've been able to accomplish that. It's late March. We have not moved forward and then had to move back. The only exception to that The only exception to that are a few classrooms where we've had to quarantine and we've just sort of calling that targeted decision-making based on unique circumstances in a classroom in a school at a gray level.
All right, couple more here and then I'll be done.
Okay.
What does the CDC say about sporting events?
CDC, well, I think Bill has it laid out. The CDC is in conflict with the sporting events. And here's where we get into, uh, state, uh, state input, MHSAA. Uh, I think Steve Baker would say we have 97, 98% of the school districts in the state are following the guidelines from, uh, the High School Athletic Association. We are in that high percentage. And it varies from, uh, it, there's a, there's, there's a variation from those directives and what CDC has said. So especially as it relates to inside events.
Does it make sense, I'm asking the question out loud, whether we should square up our position on sports with our position on schools and, or on, on face-to-face or moving forward? Yeah, Dr. Barnes.
So one of the things I would point out, the new, one of, one of the, the big updates that was in the Friday afternoon CDC update dump was the, the February 26th version of it said that no indoor or sports should be held virtually in the red. That was the language and I'm paraphrasing a little bit, but that there shouldn't be sports in red. The new update that came out on Friday afternoon changed the language to say sports and extracurricular activities occur only if they can be held outdoors with more than six feet of physical distancing. So as we, we're, we are wrapping up our winter sports season and moving into, um, spring sports. And so spring sports almost exclusively are outdoors and, and actually meet this requirement. With the exception, you know, obviously you can, you know, you run into people in, in certain sports, but most of them are outside. So right now we are currently wrapping up our winter tournaments, winter championships and some of those types of things. And MDHHS, um, their guidance still is, yes, you can have sports if you're following the MHSAA rules. And now they've added this, this testing layer, which we're waiting for interpretations on it. So my recommendation, and, and this is just me and Dr. Chapin, please weigh in as well. My recommendation is that we continue to follow what MDHHS has told us to do, um, moving forward. Because I think that, um, you know, I, I, I know there's challenges. But what I wanna make sure is that we are in a position as a district where the CDC metric is our base for what we do. But if we're told to do something different by our own Health Department or our own state-level Health Department, then, then we are following that, um, that local, um, local recommendation. To the, to both ways, right? So if the local recommendation is you're doing too much, you gotta dial it back. Or if the local recommendation is you're not doing enough, you need to increase. Um, I, I would like to ensure moving forward that we say it clearly here that those state agencies, um, their opinion on this has to matter.
Okay. Thank you for those answers. I appreciate them.
Ms. Shannon, Mr. Chiplet, Ms. Fort, I know you spoke on the committee side, but make sure you have anything else you wanna add before we go through maybe any round twos.
So my biggest question was this, the one that, uh, Mr. McKenon already asked, when exactly would changes be made given a change in the numbers of the metric? And I believe that's been answered to my satisfaction. So, um, I have no further questions at this time.
Regarding the, the, I assume, or the, the transportation dilemma, partially because it's so competitive and difficult to find drivers right now. Is that, that's still correct?
Yeah, I, this, the, the transportation issue is not a function of our current plan. It's a function of having enough drivers to drive the, the increased number of kids around the district. So, um, you know, I, it's not fair for me to make any promises on Mr. Buckholz's behalf. But I know him, he and his staff are working their tails off, um, to make it all work out the way that it's supposed to work. So I, I am confident there will be, um, a plan that will, will work for families. Again, like everything, it might not be perfect. But I, I'm confident there's a plan and, and as we go through this next week, that will become clearer. Um, and it is certainly not for lack of effort by Mr. Buckles and his, um, his team. But yes, quite honestly, it is a function of, um, of just purely the numbers of drivers that are available in the super competitive market for bus drivers right now.
You know, Dr. Gabriel's done a nice job with that too. Uh, Steve, do you wanna weigh in on that? I think there've been some developments even as recently as this afternoon.
Sure. Yeah, I, I think you're right, Jared. You hit it right on the head, the reasons behind it. I, I think as Bill said, we're working through it. You know, uh, uh, just to give you an example, the, the progress on, on Friday, we, we, we were, felt we were gonna be coming here and saying we would be eliminating or cutting some transportation. As of right now, it doesn't appear that we're going to have to do that. We do expect however, um, that because of the shortage, we would likely see some, some longer bus rides, especially for high school students on the way home. So with that information, we are gonna be reaching out to those high school parents who have, um, said that they were interested in transportation and letting them know that, uh, here's the circumstance. And if, if they, uh, some may choose to change their mind with the transportation, some, some may not. But yes, you're absolutely right. This is a transit, this is a bus driver shortage. This is not just Grand Ledge Public Schools. This is, uh, uh, most districts across the state right now. But, uh, as Bill said, I think Pete and his staff have done an outstanding job, uh, patching it together. And, and I think, um, probably the end result is we will not have to eliminate routes, but we, we may see some longer rides on the bus in order to make it happen, especially for those high school students going home at the end of the day.
Thank you. I'll thank Mr. Quine for his question. We flagged this as well and for the responses, particularly with respect to sports. I mean, I mean, those are exciting. A lot of the comments we received, uh, from the community involve the mental health aspect and the interaction that they would like for their students. That's not only in school, but that's sporting events as well. There's that importance, um, for that aspect of it. However, there was also some, some press and, and realizations that those sporting events may have contributed to some recent upticks now related to our district and making sure that our plan takes the CDC as well as state guidance and local guidance fully, um, with respect to sports and school. That is a tough pill to swallow. Realizing those CDC guidelines would suggest we shouldn't be doing indoor sports right now. I'm, wanted to just highlight that, uh, as a, as a great question. And then also the fact that I, I think there's a commitment to, uh, the guidance that we are getting locally and at the state level. If that contradicts what the CD says, the district's preparing to follow that and acknowledge it. So that's regardless of sports or if the state tomorrow says, never mind, uh, we're going back virtual. We're seeing a bad trend here. Hearing that the district plans to adhere to those requests and requirements. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, but that's, that's why that helped satisfy that glaring question for me, just given that what's been going on lately. I also wanna confirm, I think I heard any, any child, any student that has requested to go back will be able to under this plan. It may not be what everyone wants, that it's full-time, full days of school every day a week, but that that's being accomplished with this proposal.
But we're also verifying the registration that took place. But we understand there'll be some circumstances that will allow our principals to make those decisions. Yes. In, in concert with the parents, yes.
I feel odd saying this. Um, I'm a fan of some of the subjective considerations. Because I think those subjective considerations could lead to more instructional time and more in-person learning as much as they could influence a decision to maybe pull back. I think that allows us the opportunity to maybe, maybe a classroom has to quarantine or a cohort or something of that nature because, uh, we're giving ourselves room to acknowledge vaccinations and other developments. Or maybe consider that a, a statewide trend might be much different than local. So as odd as that sounds, we all favor something definitive. Um, I'm appreciative of that. Um, that might get us more Friday instruction as Mr. McKenon pointed out. So just giving my thoughts there of I would like to not pin us in a corner either as much as we can. I'm not suggesting we are. It's just, I, I like, uh, where this is headed so far.
That's very fair. You know, I, I'd like to just add to that. I think the inertia in the district. And again, it's hard to put this in the slides. Hard to, uh, you know, really project how this is going to play. But I believe sincerely that the inertia in the district from teachers, administrators is we want students in school. We wanna do it safely. There's no question about that. But the basic inertia in school is we want our students, we've, we're, somebody said, I think it's 48 days left in this school year. I'm not sure if that begins after spring break or if that begins this week, but I haven't counted myself. I've been fixated on 48 days and the inertia is to bring students in, not to keep students out. Again, that's hard to build into the comments that we've had tonight. And you can call me out on that, uh, public or board. You know, a few weeks from now, we'll see how, where this all plays out. But I really believe that's, that's the pulse. And I think what I like about that Next Steps Advisory Group is there, there's a really good representation. And I think they collectively have the pulse on where this district is. Uh, and I probably get some of that commentary from, uh, what's taking place in that Next Steps Advisory Group Committee. I add that, subjectively.
Perfect. Uh, anything else from the board? Okay. Oh, Mr. Fort.
I just wanted to quick add, um, on the sports issue. One of the things that stuck with me, um, at the end of one of our previous meetings, it was Tyler Hubert addressed the board and said, um, something about give these kids some hope. And I think that this, um, with the spring season coming up to stop the kids that are just wrapping up the winter sports at this point would be, um, really hard for those kids. So as much as I am concerned with the idea of sports going on and our academics not, I think at this point in time, because our spring sports will be primarily outdoors, it makes sense to me to allow the winter kids to finish up. So just wanted to add that to sense on the sports.
Mr. Quine?
And I, I want, you know, I want all that too for people. I just can't help but see the, for lack of a better term, the, the, the difference in the hypocrisy in it. It's something that President Pearson brought up last time and I, that's what I struggle with. Truly with the inconsistency of it. You know, if we are in red, then we probably shouldn't, we should probably stop sports right now. At least the indoor ones. If we're gonna follow that guideline, but that's, that's, you know, either here or there, but that's just my comment.
It's a, it's a, it's a fair one. It's one we need to talk about openly. It's, I think, i- if we were to hear something from state and local government that contradicted this plan tomorrow that didn't involve sports, it would be hypocritical not to take that and, and factor that in and act on it. Because I think we're justifying the completion of these winter indoor sports right now based on MDHHS and anticipated additional guidance, um, locally. So. But that's my read of it. Um, I, I'm not trying to take away from that question. Anyone else?
I would just like to take the opportunity to say thank you for, for, uh, letting us present tonight. Thanks for your, your focus on making data-driven, safe educational decisions for our kids. So, um, I appreciate the time. I know it was long, uh, and it has been long, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you for all the work. I think others will echo that later when we get to our comment period, but, uh, thank you for this and it's very helpful. Okay, uh, this brings us to our first public comment segment. This is public comment on agenda item including the DLPS extended COVID-19 learning plan that was just presented. Just reemphasizing that request, this is for items that are on tonight's agenda, including that learning. The next public comment agenda item would be for other items perhaps that you might like to see covered in the future, but are otherwise not on tonight's agenda. That would really include, um, whether or not we voted away that you might have anticipated. So if you're here and would like to speak on the COVID learning plan or other items on tonight's agenda, we would invite you to do so at this time. Our Board Secretary, Ms. Shannon, will read our guidelines with respect to public comment. Ms. Shannon, this updated reflect the requirement for just providing the fix.
Yes. Yes, I took the, I took the liberty of updating it. So thank you, Mr. Smith. So persons may address the board for up to three minutes in the comment segments of the meeting. Individuals representing a group present at the meeting will be allotted additional time. When addressing the board, please provide your name and jurisdiction. By that, we generally mean your city, village, township, or school district. So you can be contacted for any necessary follow-up. Board meetings are constructed to conduct necessary business of the board while allowing time for the public to express concerns and opinions. Out of respect for board members, students, and staff, you will be interrupted if you personally attack a board member or district employee on issues unrelated to their job performance. Mention, mention a student's name when discussing behavior or other incidents. Engage in discussion with other members of the audience. You will be reminded when you are approaching the end of your three-minute limit, so you can conclude with your strongest points. The board will not respond to questions or comments during public comment, but the superintendent will do his best to answer questions at the end of the meeting. If immediate answers are not available, arrangements will be made to provide you with the information requested.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. That brings us to, uh, our first, I think, Ms. Dayton, whenever you're ready.
Yep, Leigh Ann Dayton, Grand Ledge, the grandma. Okay, I am so confused on how you determine the metrics. If, if my calculations are correct, you've got a district of about 5,300. And if nine kids have COVID, that's less than 1%. So when I'm seeing the presentation and you're at 6.7%, I'm just not understanding how you came to that figure. So that was one comment. Maybe I could get clarified in the future. The other comment is the one extra hour that you're offering in the morning is tutoring. It is not in-person, um, instruction, which I, I interpret it as being a teacher teaching a subject. So I don't know how that meets the mandate for offering a total of 20 hours of in-person instruction. It, it's kinda to me like extra help if you need it. My daughter saw during the presentation and I totally missed it. Maybe we're not understanding that it might be possible for, um, K through A to start at 10:15 in the morning. I hope that doesn't happen because we're gonna have a logistical nightmare of getting the kids to school. Um, a lot of us have had to go back to work and, um, I'm back to work. My husband's here with the kids and he's basically support because he can't operate a computer. So, um, that's gonna be a difficult task and I imagine other families may also run into that problem. I would be more than willing though to figure out a way to self-transport the kids if they somehow could get back to at least four days in person. Um, I did see on the news tonight that the largest district in the US, New York schools has welcomed back their high school students today, first time in a year. So that's, uh, promising on that end. And then the last thing I just wanna mention is, um, a week in the instruction of the first grader. Mr. McKenon mentioned something about Friday. It is Mr. McKenna mentioned something about Friday. It is virtual. They do have Zoom in the morning, but from noon on, the teachers go into meetings. So it's all learning online. There's no personal instruction. The first grader, she's on from nine to nine thirty with her Zoom meeting and then she.
Thirty seconds.
Then she has about fifteen minutes in a small group. By eleven o'clock, she's got her seesaw slides done for the day. So unless she has music, art, or gym, she doesn't have to log back on again until three o'clock. She gets maybe two to three hours worth of instruction a day. That is it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Laura Dayton. I am in the city of Grand Ledge. Few things, I've been listening to everything going on. First thing I was making notes of was the NWEA scores, how they stated that those were lower. I believe the scores are screwed because the scores would actually be a lot lower than what they are because. During my conferences for like with the teachers, they said that the children would actually. Have to read them themselves where they actually had it read to them. So they did better than what they expected. So given that situation, like if they had the normal in-person testing, that the scores would actually be a lot lower. Now, if we had more face-to-face, scores would probably be about where they are right now. And then for the metrics, I know you guys just did that one hour of tutoring for like this week only. Once again, I mean, like the tutoring portion of like how it was labeled and like the fact that. It's only one week, no school transportation, it's outside of normal school hours. Like to, to me, that felt like that was not considered the instruction time, in my opinion. And then as far as the, the new proposed. Schedule going forward for what you guys are going to be doing, the metrics and whatnot. Now with that, with the schedule, I guess, you know, my mother had mentioned before me, which is the grandma. She, the schedule, is that correct? Ten fifteen in the morning to three fifteen, Monday through Thursday for the red and orange phase? If so, I mean, that's five hours a day, four days a week. That's twenty hours. I mean, yes, we're increasing our hours right now from sixteen to twenty. But still, if we're going to start out in the red phase and then it's going to be a while before we even get to the yellow and blue phase in it. By then, if that schedule is correct, the ten fifteen to three fifteen, you're talking five hours, five days a week, twenty-five hours of school. I mean, if, if the kids can actually go during that tutoring time, Monday through Thursday, have it optional from eight AM to nine AM. If they can be there for that, why can't they be there all day is a huge question that, that does bother me. Just because my kids do a lot better having that full face-to-face learning. From start to finish all day. But other than that, like I, I do agree with Ben also about the sports. If we're in the red phase for academics, then we should stop sports too. It just only makes sense if, if they're going to stop the learning, then the extracurriculars just stop as well. But that's that. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yes, this is Amber Swint. I'm in Delta Township. I'm a little bit newer to listening to some of the board meetings. But I just want to echo what the grandmother and mother that were just on. Mentioned as their concerns. I myself have the same concerns. Regarding my child in the district and I can tell you what I have seen with her from the start of. Online learning is a straight A student, go to mostly C grades. I've seen an emotional impact on her from the lack of time around friends. She is only child. And quite honestly, in my opinion. My situation's minimal compared to what I'm hearing from most parents who have numerous children. Or children with learning disabilities in the district. So. From what I've heard tonight with the plan to return, it. It doesn't make sense to me that we're, we're basing this all on projections of what may happen. Versus giving the opportunity for our children to have what they need. This board is here to represent what. The district wants and a majority of this district wants our children in school. That's been made very clear. So that has continually been disregarded, it feels like. And I think you've got a lot of parents at a breaking point with it at this point in time. I would like to request based on comments I heard on the last meeting. There were three members, Ms. Shannon, Ms. DuFort, and Mr. Shiflett. Who voted against having our children back in school. And who brought up very unprofessional political comments during the meeting. I and other parents have echoed, we would like their immediate resignation from this board. This board needs to stand up for what is in the best interest of the children and the families in this district. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Colleen.
Hello, I am Colleen Price and I live in Onida Township. I am also a twenty-six-year proud Grand Ledge Public Schools employee. I taught for seventeen years at Hayes and now I teach at the NEF kindergarten center. And I just wanted to take a minute and say. I, I know, I can't imagine being in your shoes. This is very stressful. I have said to you all repeatedly, as parents. We think of one child. As a teacher, I think of. My between fourteen and thirty kids and you guys have to think of how many thousands are you. Thinking for and that must be really stressful and I listen and I just know as a teacher. I don't know how much harder I can work. But because I'm part of this community and I've lived here and my daughter goes here, I'm willing to try. And I guess what I want is when parents come here and I hear you. I'm showing you empathy. I hear how upset you are. Have you talked to your teacher? When I, when I went to college, they said education is a three-legged stool. It's, it's the parent, it's the teacher, and it's the child. And there are times when I feel the child and the teacher are working harder than the parent. There are times when I think the parent and the child, my dad died of a massive brain aneurysm. Just great, like what, I can't tell you what I did for some of those days, right? I got through. But I bet you those, my students and my parents were carrying me. So we're a three-legged stool, right? We, we want this for your kids. So have you talked to your teacher about what doesn't work? Even as I'm waiting for my turn to raise my hand, the NEF kindergarten staff is writing because we know the ten fifteen time isn't optimal. So how can we try to tweak this? How can I as one person? You guys are valuing the relationship between the teacher and the student. So I'm one person. And I have to give those face-to-face kids five hours. How do I make that equitable for my online students? And as I'm waiting for my turn, our staff at NEF is texting saying, what can we do? How can we do? And if you feel like someone in Grand Ledge Public Schools isn't trying your teacher. Then talk with us, talk with our principal, let us try to help you. And it's not that. I mean, there's, there's, right, there's bad educators, right? There's bad dentists, there's bad doctors, but every educator I know. I just had parent-teacher conferences with my daughter. I really feel. Out to those, out to those people and they would help me. So please let us help you try to get through this. This is truly. Hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime situation we're in. And let's let Grand Ledge be the best we can be and work together to make it for your students. And I don't mean to take a Pollyanna attitude with that. But I just truly want us to work together to try to have this be successful. So thank you, board. Thank you, administrators. Thank you, fellow teachers. Thank you, parents, who are so helping your kids. And thank you to my little five-year-olds who come every day and we're trying and we're learning and we're growing. Thank you.
Ellie.
Yes, hi. Thank you, Ms., oh, I'm sorry. Ellie Darnell, Delta Township. And I have two. Two juniors this year and my talk was a little different now after hearing. Mrs. Price or Ms. Price. I would just like, first of all, to thank Dr. Barnes for the presentation tonight. And Dr. Chapin for taking on this job this year in the times of COVID. And what an incredibly difficult job that is. I want to just stress, and I'm addressing all Grand Ledge students or teachers. And staff that your work has been invaluable this year. And I know I, as a parent, appreciate I don't tell you enough. And I need to make that a focus of my life is to give you positive feedback. Because I feel you've done everything you can to educate my sons and I appreciate your effort. Again, I have juniors, so we've gone through Delta Center, we've gone through Hayes. We've hit every district with, with my daughter except for NEF. And I just can't say enough about what the Grand Ledge staff does, what the teachers do, what the bus drivers do. I mean, every person in this district is valuable and I feel. That they don't always get a positive accolade. And I guess that was my role. That needs to be my role in my comments tonight. And I just, I also just want to thank the district for. Giving a virtual option for those families. I loved Dr. Barnes. The risk tolerance, like our family, our risk tolerance. We is very high. We don't. It's different than other families because COVID has affected our family in a different way than it's affected other families. And just, Ms. Shannon, I just want you to know that the reason I voted for you. Was because I knew you would take science into consideration and bringing the kids back in a safe manner. So just, so you know, that is legit why I voted for you. And I just want to again, thank all staff. It goes from the top down. And I just want to thank everybody for all the hard work they do to keep our children safe and to educate them. And I thank you and it's, I took more time than I thought I would tonight, but I, I do think they need to know that. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi, Megan Weber in Watertown Township. I am, I have four kids that go to Acusa. Two of them with IEPs and I feel like I said this kind of same comment in the last board meeting. But I'm extremely concerned with the special ed kiddos. And this five-hour plan. So with, with them being at school five hours, we're going to take forty-five minutes away for lunch. We're going to take probably half an hour possibly away for specials. Which will leave three and three-quarters of the time period. One of my kiddos gets at least an hour of pull-out time during the day, which would that give him two hours and. The third, forty-five minutes with his teacher for direct instruction. That really scares me with the idea that he's been able to go to school all day. And now we're cutting out two hours a day of that time. I'm also, as another parent shared their concern about transportation. Is there going to be before or after care for families that can't do the ten o'clock start or the three o'clock end? I feel like that's a big weight that is going to be on some of the parents' shoulders. Especially when we filled out the survey and it. I guess we felt that it was going to be an all-day, every-day. Or at least similar to what the hybrid is now of all-day instruction rather than. Kind of cutting an hour at the beginning at the end. I know I checked out the website. That was in Dr. Barnes's presentation and it's very interesting. Especially to see the majority of the state in red and then knowing some of the larger districts. For example, how old that my niece and nephew go to who have been in person all day, every day, all school year. And they have over twenty-three hundred students in that district. Overall, I mean, I know we'll make it work. That's kind of, I feel like how this school year has been. But as Ms. Price said, being a voice, I also kind of want to be that voice for the special ed kids. Because I think they've really suffered this school year and with the two that I have. We are, our testing scores definitely reflect that and I know. It's going to be a big struggle and a big push. This summer to try to get them up with their peers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Laura Hubbard from Portland, Michigan. We are a school of choice. Family for personal reasons and. The, I echo some of the other parents' sentiments. The logistical nightmare of running kids around when you have three kids. And also the survey that we were sent out. We were sent out way before this plan was ever presented and this is not what we. This is not, at least our family, this is not what we understood we were being asked about. Is this, I also want to know, I don't know if it was said or not because some of it was hard to follow. Is this going to be in front of teachers or still learning labs? Our kids need five days a week in front of their teacher. It's just seems so complicated and the schools just need to be opened up. I also want to echo Megan's sentiments. Our daughter goes to Acusa as well and she's in special education and she has four services a week. That she has to fit into her schedule and she's changed her schedule so many times this year. I can hardly keep up. They have staff coming and going and now it's going to be another shift. For her, another schedule change for her when she just got settled in because of the last. You know, when we, they added the two days a week. So I just want to echo that. How hard it has been this year for the special education kids and. How far that I know our daughter has fallen behind because she can't get. She hasn't always been able to get in-person services. As a matter of fact, wasn't even told to us in the beginning that she couldn't even have that as an option. We had to ask for it. So I just wanted to echo that and. Just make note about the logistical nightmare and that this is just, it just blows my mind that. Still, what I feel is, and I appreciate everybody who works hard, just like everyone else does. That doesn't go unrecognized, but. It's just, it's just blows my mind. Some of the other districts that were mentioned. Their districts are fighting to go back as well. So it's, yeah, anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Katie.
You know, maybe she dropped off. All right, it's pretty hidey.
Hi, I'm Heidi Gottlieb. I live in the city of Grand Ledge. Honestly, I think you guys are doing an impossible job. I think that some people are just thinking of their individual kid or student that they have in their home. And again, I spoke again for the teachers before, and I'm not a teacher. I just love teachers. I love my son's teacher. She's doing a remarkable job. I don't think they are getting enough praise for the amount of effort they are putting in, day in and day out. And the reason that you're doing the 10:15 to the 3:15 is for them. Is so that they don't have to bust their butts trying to do virtual while they're doing in-person or take their time out of what they're already doing to record pre-recorded lessons. I just, what I'm very sad about, me personally, as a parent, as a Grand Ledge member of our community, is I'm really sad about our community. And how negative and horrible everybody has been surrounding this whole going back to school, COVID, whatever. COVID is still a real thing. Yeah, some of our teachers got vaccinated, some of them didn't. Our kids aren't vaccinated. The homes they come home to might not be vaccinated. So I just think that, that we just need to maybe just stop for a minute and, and try to think that we are a very, very big district. And some of these districts that have gone back are struggling. They have things that you don't see going on. They have, they tried to go back and maybe they're trying to be virtual in the classroom. And the teacher's virtual, there's not enough bandwidth, there's not enough internet to allow for that. Plus, yeah, I want my kid in person, but I also want my kid to succeed and not have to be bounced back and forth. And something that Dr. Chapin had said, and that I have been eternally grateful, is that we haven't bounced back and forth. Because I have friends who have bounced back and forth. And the number one thing for children, special needs or not, is consistency.
Thirty seconds.
And I just think that we are not putting enough responsibility on ourselves as parents, as we should. And I'm sorry if that makes people mad, but teachers are doing a lot. And like Colleen said, we're a three-legged stool. We all are in this together. So thank you.
Thank you.
They do okay. I get a little passionate in my hand. I get a little passionate.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yes, Katie Fox, City of Grand Ledge. I know that some people have talked about if, you know, we're in red or whatever, that sports shouldn't happen. But for a lot of high schoolers, sports is just as important as their education. Some of these kids may not even go to college unless they get a scholarship from the sport that they play. And if they're not allowed to play the sport, the recruiters can't come out. They can't see the student play, and they can't offer a scholarship. Some of these kids have been isolated since last year. So getting, you know, the few hours a week to be able to be with their friends, playing sports, doing something they love, then they should be allowed to do it. Football got to play, but now all of a sudden you're going to pull spring sports? I mean, come on, that's ridiculous. These kids need to be able to be kids. I get, you know, we need to be back in school when it's safe, I get it. But this isn't going away anytime soon. It's, as everyone likes to say, the new normal. And we just need to figure it out. And you know what? We need to let them play. Let there be, I get there's guidelines, whatever, I get that. I bet you every single high schooler is more than willing to follow whatever guidelines are put out for it. Because that's how badly they want to play their sport. My son is a senior. I've spoken before, the class of 2021. This is his last opportunity to play the sport he loves, archery. You know, we've gotten a few weeks in, and I coach it. And the look on these kids' faces tell me exactly that they are where they need to be. They're maintaining the distance. They're keeping their masks on. They're doing everything we ask them to do. Temperature checks, health screenings before they even enter the building. They're doing it all, because that's how much that they want to participate. And, you know, all the kids need to play, but especially the seniors, the class of 2021. Y'all have taken enough away from them. Don't take this away from them too.
Jill.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I am the daughter, the other daughter of the grandma three. And one thing that my sister and my mother and I all agree on is we want to thank the teachers for going above and beyond this year. I know my son's kindergarten teacher, Mrs. Browning, has went way above. I'm sure she's purchased lots of school supplies and whatnot for my son and all the other kids in his class to have. And little gifts to cheer him up and everything, and that's been amazing for him to give him a little incentive. Even my second graders' teacher at Beagle, Mr. Snyder, has been awesome. And they've just been very accommodating with the unusual circumstances of the year. My kids are back and they're doing the tutoring sessions. They like it. My kindergartner does see his teacher in person, but my second grader is in a learning lab. But they just want to go to school all day, every day. And I really wish that there was a way for that to happen. And I had a question about what next year would look like. Are we going to be following the same guidelines as we are currently? Or are we going to try to go for a full-time schedule? It would be very helpful for parents to kind of know which way it's going to go so that parents can start planning ahead of time. If they want to try a different district, if we're not going to go full-time or, you know, setting up childcare or whatnot, that would be very helpful. That's it.
Thank you. Tim.
Hi, my name is Tim Totten. I have a couple of young daughters who've been going in person to OSL. And it's been fine all year with them. And my daughter, all this will be going to Grand Ledge next year, next fall. My comment here, I'm an electrical engineer with, I've got knowledge and statistics and everything. I want to make a comment about the boards' use of the CDC guidelines as their bible. My opinion is the CDC guidelines are quite arbitrary, quite arbitrarily set. You know, number of cases per 100,000 rounding and everything. And that they are, they're arbitrary, I think. And I'm thinking they're creating too restrictive of an atmosphere of not, not, not being in person for the students. That's pretty much it. I think that there needs to be more common sense with creating the guidelines and falling back less on, well, this is a science, when it's a CDC guideline. Do you even know what science or statistics or whatever they put into those guidelines? They're really arbitrary. So my recommendation is, is maybe you're going to finish up the year with these current guidelines. But I think you, it would be wise to rethink the strategy for next year at least. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm going to start this out with, I'm going to echo what Amber said earlier. And I'm going to call for the resignation of Shannon, or, yep, Shannon DuFort, Shiffler. I'm also going to ask for the resignation of McKenna and Smith. And I'm also going to ask for resignation of Chapin. Because you guys have, you know, I think you guys have shown to the community, you're unprofessionalism, not only in your comments during the board, but you've done it, you know, I think, sitting here watching your videos, where you guys nod your heads or you make smirks or, you know, I mean, we do that on our end maybe, but we don't make it known to you guys. You guys don't see our smirks, you don't see our comments when we're sitting here speaking to you guys. You know, and you're unprofessionalism of, you know, how you guys act and how you hold yourselves. It's, I think you guys should be more than inclined and willing to, you know, resign. You know, I, I've sat there with Dr. Chapin just a couple of weeks ago. Him and I had a call. And he sat there and he lied to me telling me that he knew nothing about the House Bill 4048. Well, you know, back on February 22nd, Jared Smith, he made the reference to it being tie-barred to 4049. He said 4049 had a tie-bar of other legislation. That sat, 4048 sat with the legislatures from like, for like a month, I think it was. I forget the exact timeline, but you guys can go and look that up online. You know, it's there. And to keep on sitting here bringing politics, politics, politics in this, this is about our kids, you guys. It's not about Democrats, it's not about Republicans. I mean, yeah, it is, yeah, it's not. But this is about our kids. Our kids are the ones that's suffering. You know, and it's us parents, it's us community people, it's the teachers. You know, I get, I get, maybe it's not all the teachers, but I'm sure there's a portion of teachers. Yeah, they want to be back in the classroom, want the kids back, because it's, you know, they know what's right. You know, but this nonsense of keeping them out of the school, you know, and these metrics. I mean, they're, whether they're obtainable or not, it's like, come on, you guys. How many, I mean, do you have all this time to make these fantasy frickin' metrics?
Thirty seconds.
Yep, I got that. But anyways, you got all this time to make these fantasy frickin' metrics. How about you guys spend some time to actually get the kids back in the class and where they belong? And also, you know, you guys also want to get rid of the non-agenda and agenda items. What is that? Cancel culture? So we can't sit there and have another three minutes later on to talk about non-agenda stuff? You know, with all the cancel culture, you know, thanks a lot, I guess, you guys.
Kristen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, Kristen Baker. I have three children, two 10-year-olds and a 13-year-old. I just wanted to speak to the mom and the teacher that spoke earlier about how parents are against teachers if they want their kid in school.
I just want to be clear that, I just want to be clear that we're not to engage in discussion with members of the audience. But if you want to make your own statement that doesn't engage with the other members of the audience, please do so.
I'm not engaging in discussion, I'm just making a statement. I, I just wanted to make a statement that I myself, an advocate for my child, my children, I'm also, in, very much so, in support of the teachers in the school district. The only reason I've kept one of my children in the school district is because of one of the teachers. Mrs. Zakurski is a phenomenal special education teacher. And that's the only reason my daughter is still in the school district. I moved my son to a private school and I moved my other daughter to a neighboring school district so she could have full in-person learning. And she's been there since October and she's been totally fine. So my struggle is, I appreciate that you've taken the time to think through how you've come up with this plan. I think over and over, I'm seeing that special education kids are not being factored into any of your discussions or any of your planning, because they kind of are an afterthought all the time. Every time my daughter is left not getting services that she needs, and every time with the latest version of what's going on, this two-person, or two-person, two-day-a-week plan that she's going to, she actually lost in-person time from what she was doing with her special education teacher. So I think, if, if anything, I would just recommend going forward, any planning that you do, please make sure that you involve the special education kids in your planning and make sure that they're getting what they need. Because to be honest with you, they've gotten a shaft time and time again throughout this whole entire year. And I just feel awful for the outcome of what's going to come of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
We can. Please go ahead when you're ready.
Sorry, I was dealing with a loose tooth issue. I just want to say, for the parents who have special needs children, we have taken a hit this school year. You canceled special ed. My child, who, the only reason he's still in the district right now is because of Allison Gottlieb and what she has been able to do with him. When we can't get him to do something, or a teacher can't get him to do something, she comes through and is able to make it happen. He has suffered so many setbacks this year. He has regressed back to a six-year-old level, and my son just turned 11. He was making strides last year. He was on task to be a fifth grader. And I feel that we really need to help those that need the most or would benefit for the most face-to-face. We need to get our special ed kids back in the rooms. My daughter has also become special needs through this school year, becoming ADHD. Please, let's just bring our kids back, face-to-face, no computers, do the masks. Just, just get our kids back in, in the buildings. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Laura.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I'm Laura Mauer in Delta Township. I'm a parent of a third grader and a kindergartner. I had a very different speech planned for tonight, because I was expecting to have to put up a fight convincing you guys to go back to more in-person learning. I'm happy to say that I'm happy with the proposal that I've heard. I think it does provide that additional in-person time that my kids desperately need. I do also want to thank my kids' teachers, Mrs. Vogle and Mrs. Summerlot and Mrs. Shepherd. She's stepped up and taken on my daughter during her in-person time, and they've all been wonderful. And I couldn't be more pleased with their teachers. They've really done an incredible job. And a lot is being asked of them. I know now that we're in this hybrid plan, they have to maintain virtual classroom and then in-person classroom, and that is a lot. So thank you to them, you're doing incredible. We appreciate it. One thing I do want to have clarified is with this new plan. what, what is the in-person time gonna look like? Is it going to be true in-person instruction and in-person work? Or is it going to be more of what's going on now, which is basically virtual learning in a classroom? And my daughter really, really hopes that she just gets to do normal schoolwork. She's tired of doing everything on her computer. And I really hope they can have some normal schooling. I know the kindergarten has been more like that and it's worked really well. And so I hope the elementary can work towards that too. Another thing I want to mention is, dear, we really need to think about next year. And I need to know what Grand Ledge is gonna look like next year. Are we going to guarantee to have a full-time, five-days-a-week, face-to-face traditional learning? Will that be guaranteed regardless of what's happening with COVID? Because if that's not guaranteed, I sadly might have to pull my children from the district. And I don't want to do that. We built a house in Grand Ledge because we love the schools, we love the community. And I want to stay here. I don't want to pull my kids. But I'm gonna have to pull them to a private school or a school of choice. If you can't guarantee me, we'll be fully in-person next year. So please, please, I beg you, think about that next year. And don't get yourself in the predicament that we're in this year where you're kind of forced to do a little bit of both. Like, it's okay if you want to offer a virtual program next year for the kids that want it. But don't make the teachers do both. It's asking too much of them. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to either set of learners. Both kids deserve to be fully, have their teacher fully there for them for their time. But I do appreciate the increase in person time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Smith, that's the end of the line.
Great. Thank you for that. I, I think I anticipate there will be some responsive comment to what we just heard. As we move through the agenda, next though, we have some new business. But also somewhat in response to some of the comment we just received, our first item for discussion is fall 2021, 2022 planning. I think there was a request at our last board meeting that that be added to this agenda so that we start to talk about what we are thinking for next fall and what that might look like. I can't remember who made that request, but maybe that member wants to start. All right, Mr. Quine.
Thank you. I, I didn't know that it would be on this agenda, so I appreciate whoever put it on. I think it's a good time to start. I, I guess, you know, we're at a situation where we kind of have to think about a lot of different moving parts. And I know everybody has. And let me just start by saying, I, I do appreciate all of the work that the administration has done. Although I don't necessarily agree with a lot of it, I do, I do think that it's been well-intentioned and that they are working very hard on it. But we, we now are to a point where at the end of this year, we have to look ahead to fall. And I just think if there are no prohibitions by the state or any other governing authority that we, we need to offer a full-time option for people or a full-time total for people next year. Or maybe a both, an option for in-person and for virtual. And one of my reasons for wanting to do this is I think we owe it to our new superintendent to kind of have this issue resolved now to the best of our ability. So that we can take that off his or her plate when they come in, in July. I certainly don't think we ought to saddle a new superintendent with walking into that minefield. And I agree with one of the prior comments. I think we've done ourselves a little bit of injustice this year trying to saddle both things. And it's, it's hard to do both. And I think we've learned that. It's, it's almost impossible to do it well. And so I just think we need to probably sooner rather than later to give parents a way to plan for next year. And, and my proposal would be that we, you know, move steadily to, you know, back to normal in the fall unless there's a, you know, a governmental shutdown of epic proportions as there was a year ago. So that's what I want to say about it.
So as we have others thinking about whether they want to speak tonight as well, just, just to couch this. This is a discussion item. There's no vote on the fall year at this point. I anticipate this comes up on several agendas going forward. So for those listening, there'll be opportunity for public comment when this is an agenda item more and more.
I'll say, I, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. McKenna.
Go ahead.
I'll say, you know, I think it's hard for folks who are watching because maybe sometimes you just see the votes, but I'll, you know, I'll say I, I agree with Mr. Quina. I think that he and I, you know, we've got some differences of opinion on kind of where the status quo is. But I'll say I'm hopeful, which I think is a dangerous thing sometimes in 2020, 2021. But I would be shocked at this point. I know somebody was just asking for a guarantee. I think guarantees are also dangerous, but I'd be shocked if we aren't in a situation that is, you know, just markedly improved. I agree with, you know, let's get a plan together. I think that if nothing else, you know, Dr. Barnes, you've got the curse of competency now showing that you can put together a plan in like fifteen minutes. So, you know, I agree, you know, let's put together a plan, I think, with the objective and the expectation that we're gonna have something that's, you know, with the expectation that the vast majority of folks are gonna be prepared to go back in person because it's gonna be safe and we're gonna be living in a new situation. But I also want to say, and I think this might speak to some of the folks who are saying, you know, they feel like maybe some of their students, particularly in special ed, have been left behind. I would hate for us to kind of forget the lessons of the possible that we've learned along the way. And I know that I've heard from some folks for whom, you know, virtual has been a really important part of, you know, their student success this year and for folks who's unexpected. I know for most families we've heard from, that's not been the case. But I think for some folks it has been. And I think to the extent that we can say, you know what, this was a horrible year, but we did learn about some things that were possible along the way and we want to preserve that for folks. You know, for whom that really works, I'd like to do that. But I, would I anticipate that back in, you know, when we're in the fall? I've got high hopes. I'm making vacations for campgrounds and stuff like that for the summer. I, you know, I'm expecting good things soon, but unfortunately, you know, it's not good things right now.
Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Quina that, you know, I think this board needs to, to show the direction it wants to be in, in the fall with the new superintendent coming in, thus, like he said, alleviating one thing off of his or her plate when that person does come in. And I think, again, this is not, this is not the, the board meeting for that. But as we move forward before the summer, I think we as a board need to discuss, you know, not necessarily a, you know, a new metric or something like that, but, you know, do we look at next year as a normal year moving forward unless, you know, this, this something happens? And, and so I think, you know, I think there's an array of opinions on this board. And I think we just need to have that discussion publicly and kind of hopefully move in the same direction through the summer.
Mr. Dufort?
I guess for the discussion, I too agree with Mr. Quina. I would hope that not only will we have a full-time face-to-face option, that we may indeed still have a virtual option as a matter of course going forward, as we did indeed find that there were students who preferred that style of learning. And the more we can offer, the better we're going to be, meet every child's needs. This has just been a very unique year. And districts everywhere across, and not only the nation, but the world are struggling with the same issues. And we're trying to do the best we can for all of our learners. And running basically two types of instruction with only one set of teachers is part of what's made it so challenging. But again, I'm hoping that for next year, we do indeed have face-to-face as well as virtual options.
So that's right. I won't try, I've tried not to restate what's already been said, but I think it's important. There's some frustration out there of wanting to be back in school. I'll echo or remind, you know, I think a lot of that frustration needs to be aimed at COVID-19. And that's, none of us wanted what has happened this year. We've all had our different approaches to how that's been handled, including our district and what they've planned. And I only say that to say we all hope and plan for as normal as possible, full-time in-person learning next fall. Barring something of the nature of a year ago in March where everyone shut down on a statewide basis with a state mandate. In other words, if the law prevents us from going back, that's one thing. That's where we have to stop shy of a guarantee. But I think that's the mind we're all at. We're, we're not planning for phases and a few hours a week or twenty hours a week in the fall. That, that's where we're at right now. That's where I'm at. In fact, we have some more thinking to do about perhaps even the summer school options. Voluntary as they may be, for those who feel like their students need some catch-up. Because this was not the year that we planned. So I think this will be a good discussion going forward by the board for that reason as well. On what's available to make sure students are ready to advance years and, and next fall. Any other comment or questions? Okay, that was a discussion item. Next on new business would be approval of the GLPS Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. If there is a motion.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the GLPS Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan as presented on March twenty-second, 2021, to include specific guidance from Table Two, recommended prevention strategies for K-12 schools and levels of community transmission from the March nineteenth, 2021 report from the Center for Disease Control, unless K-12 public schools are specifically directed otherwise from local, state, and/or national authorities.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Shannon, supported by Mr. Shiffler. Any discussion? Perhaps, oh, Mr. Shiffler.
No, no, that's my man, that's my man.
Some of the public comment we heard tonight, two of the themes we heard was the ten fifteen start time. As well as perhaps, I'm sure this is the case, but confirmation regarding discussions around special needs and special education factoring into this current plan. And if anyone wants to make some statements regarding.
I guess I'll make the ask maybe of administration. I know there were a couple of folks to, who had, and, and maybe to anybody who's listening, but I think that, you know, to the extent that we can have kind of those individual conversations with the folks who are struggling, that's gonna be the best way to get folks what they need. I know that was kind of a theme that was brought up earlier, you know, talk to your teachers, talk to your, you know, building principals. And I think that the district is more than willing to listen and help troubleshoot for folks who are, you know, feel like they're not getting what they need. So putting one more thing on your to-do list, you know, central administration. But I know we heard from a couple of folks tonight.
I think we, we heard the themes too, Nicole. And I think our, we have, we have several principals on the call. And as always, we'll, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow to debrief and share these, these themes. And I'm confident that our principals and building-level teachers and principals both will have good answers and will respond appropriately.
Thank you. Anything else from the board members? All right, Dr. Chapin, a roll call, please.
Okay, Ms. Shannon?
Yes.
I'm Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Quina?
No.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
I'm Mrs. Dufort.
Yes.
And Mr. Shiffler?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Passes five-one. Our next new business item is approval of the 2020, 2021 Budget Amendment Resolution. If there is a motion.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the 2020, 2021 General Fund Budget Amendment Resolution that reflects the February twenty-second, 2021 budget update received by the Board of Education.
Second.
All right, Mr. Shiffler by a note. We, I think, Ms. Wazensky or is anyone prepared to speak on this?
Yeah, she is. Nope, she's online. There we go.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, as Denise Dufort mentioned, this, this, these are the numbers that are behind the budget presentation that I gave to the board at the February twenty-second board meeting. The resolution does show that the budget for the twenty-two, the 2020, 21 fiscal year is showing revenues exceeding expenditures to the tune of about $440,000. So in, in other words, it's, it's a very good budget and a very difficult year. So, and the numbers that you are being presented on that resolution show that.
Any questions?
Considering that we had received something like seven or eight different financial outlooks, I think, from potential funding sources and what the impact of COVID was gonna do with sales tax revenue and proposal A funds. Then, you know, what kind of federal funds we would receive. Hitting a fifty-six million-dollar budget within $400,000 is good. It's very good. So thank you and for your team and your staff, that plus, you know, another clean audit from our auditors. You know, this, it, this is complex calculations and complex accounting. And it's done every week in real time in your office, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll let my team know that.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, Dr. Chapin.
Hey. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Quina?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mrs. Dufort?
Yes.
Mr. Shiffler?
Yes.
And Ms. Shannon?
Yeah.
Very good.
Motion passes six-zero. Our next item, approval of a resolution authorizing the sale of our Series Two bonds. Topic near and dear to my heart. Although I can't be involved. Is there someone planning to speak for this resolution?
If you'd like, I'll make one real quick and then someone can speak to it. I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing the sales of Series Two bonds not to exceed thirty-eight points, thirty-eight million, seven hundred thousand, consisting of not to exceed thirty million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand for Proposal One purposes and seven million, nine hundred and five thousand for Proposal Two purposes as presented.
For support.
Mr. McKenna? Thanks for saving me there, John.
There's just far too many Ps in there for, as dry as my mouth is right now.
All right, now, are there, are there comments on the resolution? I wasn't sure if anyone from Trune would be present or, or just go in this with our group.
No, no one from Trune is present tonight to, to present on this. It's, but the bond sale will occur. It is set to close June third. So we will have those funds and before the end of the year so that we can move forward on our Series Two construction, which would be Wakustah and Delta Center.
And just for everyone's benefit, these are bonds that have And just for everyone's benefit, these are bonds that have, are all just another series of bonds that have been authorized with voter approval previously, not a new bond transaction. And, and I have reviewed the resolution and have reviewed many, many, many like this. So I thought it looked good for what it's worth to the rest of the group.
And, and this bond sale also is, John mentioned also include the remainder of the 7, $7 million that's left in the Proposal 2 for the fine arts edition at the high school, so.
Nancy, how many more series are there? Cause I know we're supposed to do one more, I think, at the five-year mark as well, aren't we?
There will be Series 3 will be the last one, and that is scheduled at this point in time to sell in 2024.
Excellent, thank you.
And I'm, I'm not a financial advisor, but the, the series is done so that obviously we're not paying interest on bond proceeds that we're not ready to use yet. So you issue them when you're ready for that money.
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, Dr. Chapin.
I'm Mr. Quiney. You're up first.
Yes.
Mr. McKennan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dufort.
Yes.
I'm Mr. Shiffler.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes six-zero. Next up, new business item E, the Food Services Management Contract. If there is a motion, we'll get the motion in first this time.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the contract for food service management with Chartwell's for the 2020-2021 the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
To board.
Moved by Ms. Shannon, support by Mr. Shiffler. Okay, who do we have speaking on this motion?
That would be me again.
Thank you.
So this is a renewal of our food service contract. The, the renewal of the one we have in place this year is renewing for the 2021-22 fiscal year. Just want to say that Chartwell's continues to do just an outstanding job for Grand Ledge Schools. I mean, this year was extremely difficult for trying to make sure we fed all of our students, especially when they were in a virtual setting. But they did just a wonderful job. In fact, from September through February, Chartwell's has served over 100,000 breakfast meals and 110,000 lunch meals to our students. So kudos to, to Darren and his staff for managing to just to not stop even through all of the difficulties that we have experienced this year. And this contract, Chartwell's did not increase their management fees, so and we're getting a great service with no increase in prices. And they are going to continue the free lunch that as part of the the school lunch summer program that we are under at this point in time that will continue for the rest of the fiscal year as well as into this coming summer.
Boy, that's with, with businesses almost by necessity having to increase prices just, just from limited operations here. To hear that is terrific. Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Quine, I wasn't sure if you were just giving a vote or getting, okay, Dr. Chapin.
Well, Mr. Quine is up first.
Yes.
Mr. McKennan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dufort.
Yes.
Mr. Shiffler.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Yes.
And Mr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. That motion passes six-zero. Okay, a couple of bid awards are up next. The first one being for Delta Mills Fiber. If there is a motion.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved the contract for outside plant fiber optic extension for Delta Mills Elementary School with Challenger Technologies of Jackson, Michigan in the amount of 77,372, which includes acceptance of voluntary alternate aid as well as payment of required make-ready fees to the Lansing Board of Water and Light in an amount not to exceed $38,500 as recommended to be paid with the 2018 Proposal 1 Series 1 Bond Infrastructure Funds as presented.
Support.
Moved by Mrs. Dufort and supported by Mr. Shiffler.
I just have a nitpick. I know it's listed as Delta Mills Elementary School. Do we need to amend that to Delta Mills Early Childhood Center? Or is it all the same in terms of bond invoices?
I believe it's all the same. It's location that's important.
Okay.
But.
I, Dr. Johnson is our, will you be speaking on this bid award or anyone else?
Actually, I will. But that wasn't involved with this component of it. Infrastructure money is largely left to us to handle internally. This is to connect Delta Mills to our fiber optic network so we can give them the same experience as our other schools in terms of reliability and speed of communications, including our upcoming new phone system that will be deployed here in the next few weeks. We've been running relatively successfully over leased internet service over there. But it's a couple of times a week that the service goes down and we have to nudge it along to keep it, to keep it going. So this is a strongly desired improvement that we would want to do. It's our only, it's our only facility that's not connected with our fiber optic network. So we'd like to get that resolved if possible. I also mentioned that this is, the timing of this is such that we should be able to realize 50% reduction in that cost, particularly on the challenger side for the Universal Service Fund. If we get our application in, in time, which is due this week, so.
That's the perfect segue. I was going to mention, these typically come before the board after the board bond committee meets and discusses these topics. This went straight to the board. Because timing was of the essence. We did not want to wait till our next committee meeting and lose this opportunity that, that was just mentioned.
Yeah, we should, we should get 35,000, somewhere between 35 and $60,000 back and, and from the Universal Service Fund, so.
Any other comments or questions? All right, Dr. Chapin.
Mr. McKennan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dufort.
Yes.
Mr. Shiffler.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And Mr. Quiner.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six-zero. Next bid award, somebody, yeah, Mr. Shiffler just took a drink of water. He's getting ready for the Holbrook Beagle Furnishings. If there's a motion, please.
I move the Grand Ledge Public Schools Board of Education approved bid awards for Holbrook Elementary Furnishings to do well in the amount of 321,703.77 NBS in the amount of 26,578.80 Custer in the amount of 14,208.20 Great Lakes Furniture Supply in the amount of 51,225 Interstate Office Interiors in the amount of 17,888.76 Interface Interiors in the amount of 24,628.3 and Lake Shore Learning in the amount of 8,607.75 and bid awards for Beagle Middle School Furnishings to do well in the amount of 360,475.44 NBS in the amount of 9,022.42 Custer in the amount of 12,487.75 Great Lakes Furniture Supply in the amount of 118,857.20 Interior Office, Interstate Office Interiors in the amount of 33,408.46 Interface Interiors in the amount of 59,902.76 and Wagner in the amount of 43,808.32 with a 2% contingency of 21,883.90 for a total bid award of 1,124,686.56 as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shiffler, thank you, and supported by Mrs. Dufort.
I think Dr. Johnson's on for this, if there are questions.
Okay.
Mike.
Maybe Mr. Shiffler can take a breather after that lengthy motion he had to make.
I.
Seeing a Mr. Johnson or, or anyone else, I also understand similarly, this was times of the essence. Whether that was to get the order in or get these things or delivered or otherwise.
Yeah, I can address this real quickly.
Thanks.
Mike's not available. So Mike actually spoke to this in his bond update. This, this furniture was part of a bid package that went out as, as Mike said, it was, is a very competitive bid, which actually benefited us in terms of savings moving forward. So I think we're very pleased with not only the, the deal we got, so to speak, but also the, the furniture that we are getting for this purpose as well. So that, that's kind of it in a nutshell. But again, Mike talked about it a little bit in, in the process. It is true that times of the essence as well. The turnaround time for this furniture, obviously, this is stuff that we want in place and need to have in place prior to the start of the school year. And there, there's a fairly lengthy turnaround when you're talking about an order the size of this. So hence the, the reason for bringing it to the board tonight.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? All right, Dr. Chapin.
Okay, Mrs. Dufort.
Yes.
Mr. Shiffler.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Quiney.
Yes.
And Mr. McKennan.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six-zero as well. Moving along in our agenda, we're now to public comment on non-agenda items. Our board secretary read the rules for public comment earlier. I'll emphasize this, this is for non-agenda items that those may wish to raise and put a comment at this time. Mr. Duchesne.
Being done in.
Oh, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So once again, I want to thank all the parents for speaking with regard to face-to-face. The question that I do have is, our last meeting, we talked about a letter of agreement for teachers and that was going to be amended. And we move forward today with a new plan for the end of the year. But in their LOA, it says that it will be amended if we move to a green plan or to a green phase. However, a green phase doesn't really make a difference. My understanding from this plan is this is a plan till the end of the year. So one is, I'm wondering if you're going to, um, you said you're working on new protocols or whatever you call it for your Board of Education guidelines, whatever the case may be. And then also, if that's the case, and if they are going to get new LOA, then why are we voting without having a letter of agreement that is brought to the board that could potentially affect the teachers when I thought that wasn't going to happen? That is my understanding, based on the last meeting. And then my last thing I want to say is, I've said it before and I'm going to continue to say it 100% face-to-face. And frankly, all the board members need to resign, need to be recalled, other than Ben. You should all be ashamed. You're not using accurate data, following science. And frankly, I don't care about your personal opinion. Your job is to support the community and do what the community recommends, what they want. And I don't see it happening that way. So that's what I have to say. Thanks.
Brean Erica.
Hey, guys. Erica Ledesma, Delta Township. I just wanted to say happy spring break to all of our staff members and administration. Raising a glass to you, some refreshing lemon water. Thank you for the hours and hours of endless work. My biggest wish is that you don't look at your emails next week and you enjoy some rest and relaxation. Thank you to our board members. I personally appreciate our vote counting, which is how you board position that you are in. And I appreciate you making such hard decisions throughout this year. These are such complicated times. Thanks for your leadership, everybody. Thanks for your hard work. And happy spring break, teachers and staff. I really hope you appreciate all of us appreciating you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ellie.
Hi, again, Ellie Darnell, Delta Township. Just, I will make it very brief because I know there's probably Michigan fans on this meeting. I just wanted to say congratulations to Andrew Murphy and Bailey DeSilva for being homecoming. King and queen. And the reason I say that is because maybe somewhat time down the road, 20 years from now, somebody will be like, who are these kids? And I want them to look them up because they're really fantastic kids. And also I was remiss and I did not thank the school board for all of your hard work. This is a very thankless task. And I appreciate all that you do and all the hours you put in for our school district. And I'm saving myself a needing to send you an email tomorrow. So thank you very much. And I, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
John.
You hear me?
Yes.
All right, I, I just wanted to say real quick, since this is non-agenda, that I've went down the internet rabbit hole, whatever you want to call it, for the Open Meetings Act, Act, and I don't see anything in there where it says that we can't have two-way dialogue in our Board of Education meetings. I know I addressed that with the board before. And I was told that that was inappropriate, that that didn't belong. And that's why what ended up resulting in Dr. Chapin and I's conversation a couple of weeks ago. Because I guess having two-way dialogue during a Board of Education meeting is inappropriate, but even though it's not on, there's, there's nothing in the Open Meetings Act that says that can't go on. I truly believe that, you know, it's something that we could benefit from, that you guys could benefit from, from the board. And I'll state it again, if the, if the other board members, you know, aren't going to resign, you know, you have people in your community that aren't afraid to recall you guys, just so you know. And that's all I have.
Ethan.
Ethan Fox, 220 West South Street. I'm a senior at Grand Ledge High School. You've heard me talk before. Last time I talked, you pretty much just tried to pass it off as, oh, it's because of COVID and this and that. When half of what I was saying was all we want is recognition. At this point, fine, whatever, in person, not in person, whatever. You're never going to change your mind. So what's the point of even having in person? Or what's the point of even having a discussion with the community or whatever? You're never changing your mind. But all we ask for at this point is recognition, which you still have yet to give us. At this point, it was shut down last year. And all we heard about from Grand Ledge, no matter what it was, was a class of 2020, which they deserved because they worked for it. But they only lost three months. We have lost. But they only lost three months. We have lost a year and three months. And we haven't gotten any inch of recognition from the district. Yes, from the high school, which is appreciated, but from the district, nothing. It's been radio silent all year. All we ask for is for recognition for the work that we have done these past years, for this work that we've gone through. And last year was hard for us. Just as hard as the seniors from last year. And this year is harder because we didn't have anything. We didn't have a homecoming. We didn't have a senior football section, nothing. And you can't even give us an ounce of recognition. All we ask for is just something. But it seems like at this point, you're not going to give us anything. So you you're failing at least, you know, you say you care about the mental health and this and that. You never talk about class twenty-twenty-one. You never talk about us at all. You, everything you have done has not helped us at all. You can't say you care about mental health and then do nothing to help with it. So, at least give us recognition. At least do that small thing. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lucas Turpshire, Delta Township. I know this is not agenda items. But I just want to echo everything that's been said about special education. Everything that Dr. Bill, Dr. Barnes has put out there addresses, everything fucked. And you have once special education parents that are still struggling. Their health has been put out there because they're not getting the help that they need. And those special education students are not getting the help, nor are their IEPs being followed. That is, that is truly uncalled for. It's truly uncalled for, that there's no plan in place. I have an idea, which I'm going to email Dr. Barnes later on tomorrow. But for, for something to be brought to the Board of Education and not be included of your special education students, it's just un-ungrateful. I appreciate that the board has started taking up the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two um, school year to help parents get ready for that year. Because basically, nothing has been said about it up until this point. Closest thing I heard was conferences, talking to teachers and finding out, yeah, transition is going to happen next year. Nothing has been said. Everything's been about all this other stuff, but nothing about the transition. To me, we need to start talking about next year. We also need to start bringing up the Board of Educat- uh, Special Education. And bringing them, doing something more to help them out. So, appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Megan?
Hi there, um, Megan Spodaski, Watertown Township. I'm not going to be everyone's resignation tonight. Um, but I did want to um, think about one of um, Ms. Shannon's comments about not losing sight of some of the opportunities that the um, virtual experience has uh, provided us. And that got my husband and I thinking um, during conferences, how helpful it was to be able to just pop onto a Zoom meeting as opposed to coordinating, um, getting to the school after work or um, just kind, you know, contemplating schedules for um, two very different work schedule lives. So, moving forward in the fall, um, next year, just wondering if we could consider keeping um, an option for virtual conferences available as well. I am curious about the teacher's experience, if they found it helpful or not. Um, so not everybody might be in favor of that, but for us, it was a super helpful experience. Um, and thanks, everybody, for all your work and have a fantastic spring break.
Thank you.
Katie?
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so just to say that this past year has been tough would almost be putting it too simple. COVID's taught us a lot in the past year, and yet there's still a lot we don't know. As a registered nurse who works in one of our local hospitals, taking care of those COVID-positive patients, I can certainly appreciate Dr. Barnes and his team using the science and the data to drive their decisions and drive their planning, to which they bring forward to all of you to make decisions on. I can also, with that note, confirm what Ms. Shannon spoke to earlier, that our COVID numbers are on the rise. Um, just in the last five days, our COVID-positive admitted pa- admitted patients has doubled at the hospital. We are also seeing an increase in our vented patients as well. So, it's not going away anytime soon. Um, with that said, you know, it's going to be a part of our normal at it to some degree. We have to learn to move forward and find a way to do so in a safe manner. I do believe that the present, the plan presented earlier tonight offered us a good compromise. It was a first step in moving us towards more face-to-face time. And with vaccinations on the rise and the research being very promising in children under the age of sixteen, um, I have full faith that we can be back in person a hundred percent this fall. Um, I certainly hold out hope. I am the mother of two at Willow Ridge. Um, but I just wanted to um applaud everybody for the hard work that you do. I sit on multiple boards myself. I know it's a thankless job. I appreciate the weight you carry regarding our community and keeping our children safe. And um, last but not least, no, first, Dr. Chapin, thank you so much for your weekly communication. Um, as a parent, I truly appreciate that. And then last but not least, to our teachers, um, this frontline hero. You guys are my heroes. You, the the year that you guys have been through, um, I thank you. Truly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Smith, that's the end of the line.
Uh, thank you. All right, then that brings us to so, yeah, go ahead.
We had one jump in, you want to let?
Yes, but yeah.
Michelle?
See, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm always hesitant to talk, but um, just a few things. I am so thankful for all the thought and planning and decisions that have gone into this year. Um, I'm truly proud to be a comment. Um, I am really thankful of the opportunities that we have been able to give to um, families to make decisions uh based on their own personal family needs and risk tolerance. And I am incredibly grateful for, um, the students. Part of the reason I have my camera on it, it's, it's hard for me to talk, but I am so grateful for my students. Um, how hard they work, how much they have adapted, how they um, support each other and their families. Um, and just, I I really appreciate our families and how much they do. Um, and their communication and all the problem solving and things we've gone through together. Um, and I, um, I want to make sure whatever we do helps all of our students. My class happens to be an exactly fifty-fifty divided class on where my families have chosen to spend the rest of their year. And I just want to make sure that all of my students feel um, included and valued. Um, and get a quality education regardless of where they're learning from. Um, and, and so, I guess one thing on my mind right now, too, like you said, it's really hard to do, uh, to have an entirely virtual and in-person um, classes. And only to be, uh, only to have one staff. And so I know that's a challenge. That's a challenge that you're working with because I very much want to give all of my attention and all of my time to all of my students, no matter what location they're at. And I hope that we will be able to find a way just to do that and have them all feel um, all feel like they're getting the best that they can with the decisions that their families are making. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, no more hands.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, so now that moves us on to comments from staff and board. How about from staff and administration first?
I, I have no comment tonight. I think it's been a long night. And uh, I think there are some questions I've written down. As we always do, we write down names and um, sort of the tenor of the comments, I have those written down and folks can follow up and so on. But I don't have anything to add tonight. I don't, Bill, you, anything to add from your end, Dr. Dr. Barnes?
I, I just want to say I, I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate the board um, listening and and supporting the work of of the staff. Um, I was the presenter tonight, but but lots and lots and lots and lots of people provided input into what I presented. So, uh, very appreciative of the district, proud to be a comment, very appreciative of the board. Um, and I encourage, you know, families, uh, please feel free to reach out to me. I know one parent specifically referenced that he would. I'm happy to field emails and 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 problem solve with you as well. So, um, so anyway, so that's just it. I I'm appreciative of all the work of everybody that went into it and appreciative of the board for supporting the work of our great staff. So, thank you tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Barnes. Uh, if there's uh, no one else, I'll turn it over to any board members, one off the comment.
Is the uh, presentation online already, or is it going to be? That's my only comment.
Will be. Um, I'm not sure if it's there yet. Bill?
As I understand it, it is. Um, but I have not independently verified it. But Mr. Ellsworth is always very good about getting that right up there.
Okay.
That's true.
So I saw Mr. Shiflett, Mr. Quiney, whoever wants to.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I I just had a couple of things. Um, one, I know one member of the community addressed my vote at the last meeting, but was incorrect. I did vote for the additional time. Um, additionally, I'm hoping that I believe it was Mr. Hoaxma from last meeting got the busing issue resolved. And uh, I don't see, I'm I'm hoping that we're one hundred percent face-to-face in person in the fall with the vaccination. I can't rate it in climbing up as it is. And evidenced by the fact that despite the fact that I'd really like one, I can't seem to get an appointment. Uh, I'm hoping that we'll be back. And I thank everybody for their time.
I'd like to um, recognize that young man who spoke, uh, Mr. Fox, uh, the senior. Uh, I'm not quite sure what type of recognition he wants, but um, I think, um, you know, maybe we haven't done the best job in recognizing the class of twenty-one. And, you know, I, I, my heart goes out to all of those kids. Um, and I think he's, uh, I give him a lot of credit for speaking out, speaking his mind. Um, and coming out here tonight, that's not an easy thing to do um, at that age. So, for whatever it's worth, Mr. Fox, uh, we, um, I know that I want to recognize uh, the class of twenty-one. And um, I think, I thank you for for coming out and um, calling attention to that issue.
I uh, I actually have some shout-outs that I'd like to to shout out, positives. Um, want to recognize the uh, the teachers and staff that started this week um, with the extra hours, meeting students before and or after school. Um, I saw today that our Quiz Bowl team went undefeated and won the tri-county winner Quiz Bowl League, which uh, is pretty cool. I love Quiz Bowl. Um, want to recognize that we're looking at uh, having a spring musical, which sounds a little normal, which makes me happy. Um, and that'll be spelling bee this this spring, hopefully. All of the um, adults and staff and students that had to do uh, with putting together the homecoming court. That was, again, um, a little bit of normal, which was great. The varsity basketball team, the men's varsity basketball team uh, won the CAC Blue Championship in the first ever tournament. I think it's the first title they've won since, I think, uh, like two thousand three, two thousand four. So that was great. The women's, um, the women's team took second in the tournament, which was great. Um, all of the teachers during parent-teacher conferences and the extra time they put in, the custodians who will be flipping our buildings here in the next couple of weeks to get ready for this new learning, and the para-pros that have been staffing a lot of our learning labs. Um, just want to recognize everybody. Uh, like everyone said, everyone's working really hard. Um, and to move forward to more in-person, face-to-face learning, moving away from the learning labs and more to in-class learning.
Um, I echo all of those, Mr. McKenon. I was thinking along the same lines. The only thing I had to add was the women's gymnastics team, I believe they took confidences as well this year. So I wanted to give them. Um, Ethan, um, I remember you from Greenwood days and um, I I do hope that we are able to honor your class with some sort of graduation ceremony. Um, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but um, yeah, we we, I'm not sure exactly either what kind of recognition you're looking for. But we are very aware that it has been extremely difficult for all of our students this year, especially our seniors missing out on so much. So, um, we recognize that. Thank you.
So I think we're down to me, and I won't uh prolong this too much either, other than, um, you know, there there's one comment that struck me tonight. So I I'm going to call out what I feel is the extremely professional um, nature of our administration and our teachers and this board. Regardless of our positions on things, how we've interacted over this past year, I have been impressed with and proud to serve. I'm also proud of the work Dr. Chapin, the administration has done. The hours are countless. I I doubt they've had a full weekend off in a long time, if at all, in planning and reacting to regulations and directives and comments that are coming from all directions, including us. So, um, it it's not at all been a normal year, regardless of how you feel this has turned out or where it's heading. I can tell you, everyone here has put the students first. That's their intention every day, and that's the reason they're serving. That's the reason they're doing the job they're doing. So, I am positive with that. We may all disagree on the approach or the result, but that's the goal. The goal is also for returning back to a full-time, in-person curriculum. I know that's the goal as well. We all believe that we're acting in the uh, name of safety, protecting people's children um, with a responsibility to look out for them both when they're in the care, teachers, and when they're not. So, um, again, differences of opinion. But we're hearing these comments, we're receiving emails that are just as emotional, and and we're reading them. So, um, these messages come across. I know these questions were heard tonight and notes were taken and that there will be responses. Particularly with those uh, speaking to special education and and other things with respect to the plane. So, um, I know it's frustrating and it it's not what we were all used to for for many years. And and without reading into the comment from the senior too much, I'd say in a normal year, there isn't a lot that the school board would do to recognize a senior class. But I I I'm guessing in in a year where it feels like um, they've all spent their year home and away from each other and not being able to participate in the various celebrations and competition, that that can feel a little bit um, discarded or even even left out. So, I I can hear that and and I'm, maybe I'm reading in that comment, but um, it's point well taken. But that's all I have for tonight. Just wanted to throw that out there. Anything else from any other board members? Okay, uh, that brings us to future topics. We have our Board Bond Committee meeting Monday, April twelfth at five PM. That'll be followed by our regular meeting Monday, April twelfth, uh, six PM. Um, and special meeting regarding our superintendent search, Monday, April twenty-second, six PM. The location for those is all to be determined. The uh, extension or the provision of the Open Meetings Act that we're operating under currently, that that it basically automatically provides for virtual meetings expires at the end of March. So as we get into April, uh, that's sort of a new territory that will rely in part upon, um, I believe. I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, local county requirements or health code requirements that dictate what provisions of the Open Meetings Act we operate under or whether we'll be back in person. So more to come on that with respect to the location of the meeting. I just pause in case there's clarification of that comment. I'm not seeing any. So with that, I would say we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.